Yeah, no worries.
We are ready and live.
We are ready and live? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the May 27th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Begin by, I guess, I think the first thing I should do is establish a quorum. So could we call the order, the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Um, Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Missel.
Here.
Mr. Karazana.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, we are all in attendance. And I think with that, I'll open up the work session CCP 2021-2 AC44 Comp Plan Cultural Resources, and I'll turn it over to our crack staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ben Holt with the county's Long Range Planning Division. So I'll be presenting on our two topics this afternoon. And I'm also joined by Margaret Malaschewski, and she'll present some of our cultural resources content. So just a quick look at our agenda for today. We'll provide a snapshot of where we are in the AC44 schedule. And then for each of the topics we'll be discussing, we're going to provide a summary of previous commission feedback, followed by community feedback, and then we'll get into a topic overview. And we'll follow that up with a Q and A session. So you can ask questions and share your feedback. We're going to handle these two separately. So cultural resources topic will be first. We'll pause for discussion. And then we just need to make sure that we allow enough time for that second discussion for resilient communities.
How much time do you need for the presentation of the resilient communities piece?
It'll be pretty brief. I would say five minutes probably.
Okay.
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
So with our schedule, what we just finished was earlier this month, May 6, we presented the transportation session to you all. And we'll be bringing that transportation content to the board tomorrow at work session. And we also hosted an in-person community check-in meeting last week on Thursday. So with this current topic of cultural resources and resilient community, we'll be taking this content to the board on June 4. And then after that, we'll be done with each of the topic chapters. So we'll move on to other sections of the plan. And we'll be discussing plan implementation with you all on June 24 and with the board on July 16. And just a reminder to the public that our Engage AC44 website is the best place to go to review the content. We've published all of our draft chapters at this location, and we share our upcoming schedule. So we have the work sessions and upcoming outreach engagements on that website. So with that, I'll move into the cultural resources topic. And just a quick side note, I wanted to mention that we as staff are incorporating the request that we heard from both the commission and the board to include captions for all of the images within the chapter draft. So you may have noticed that we had that included for the cultural content. And we'll be updating that for all the other chapters as we complete those drafts and update them for later this year. So with cultural resources, this topic also encompasses historic and scenic resources. In terms of the previous feedback we heard from you all, support for strength and protection for our resources, protective measures beyond voluntary preservation compliance, support for a preservation ordinance, which has been considered at multiple times in the past, and as well maintaining and utilizing an up-to-date inventory of our resources. In terms of equity, it's important to provide an inclusive history and narratives. And that would include things like historic free town communities and resources built by enslaved labor and displaced peoples, which would include both native and African-American communities. Other themes were leveraging adaptive reuse to preserve buildings, utilizing greater incentives and requirements to prevent demolition of structures, and promoting and supporting cultural tourism, arts, crafts, and music. The major themes that we heard with our public feedback, it, to a large degree, mirrored the planning commission feedback. Enhanced historic preservation and requirements and incentives, continued preservation of our entrance corridors, expanding the county's historic marker program, and telling those inclusive histories as well as leveraging cultural tourism. And with that, I'll hand it over to Margaret for the next few slides.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nice to see you. Margaret Malaschewski with the Planning Division. Before I get into just a brief summary of the topic here, I would like to mention that in addition to the AC44 team, I had a lot of assistance with this chapter. I'd like to thank Chris Taggart, Mariah Gleason, Scott Clark, and James Van Branken from our team who contributed to the text. So in this chapter, we tried to make the point that cultural resources are really what make Albemarle the unique county that it is. Cultural resources establish community character. They contribute significantly to our quality of life, and they support climate action goals. But with all those positive attributes come some significant challenges. There are thousands of historic resources have been surveyed. And when I say survey, I mean a systematic technical documentation of physical attributes of a resource, not like a door-to-door questionnaire. So thousands of historic resources have been surveyed, but many of those surveys are just way out of date. Many of the early surveys of historic resources were focused on high-style architecture. They often overlooked the more modest buildings that are really make up most of the county. They often overlooked the relationship between the building and the landscape that it sits in. And they also overlooked some of the social context in which those properties were developed. Another challenge is the varying degree of protection that's in place for the various resources. Many resources do have some level of designation or recognition, but many of those designations offer no protection. For example, historic resources and some scenic roads. In other cases, protections that are in place could be refined to achieve better results. And our entrance quarters are one of those resources. And then other resources are just challenging in themselves, like our scenic view sheds, just because of the vast size of the resource. So the goal, objectives, and actions in this chapter outline some ways to try to tackle these challenges. Just as a reminder, the cultural resources goal says that Albemarle County will recognize, celebrate, and promote awareness of our resources, and that we will actively work to identify, preserve, and protect those resources. This chapter has six objectives. They address maintaining accurate surveys of our resources, educating about the resources, increasing protection through local regulations, increasing incentives, and protecting scenic resources. Now, one of the themes that comes through in this chapter, I think, I think you've all probably recognized it, is that we've got a lot of resources out there. Many of the resources overlap. For example, there might be a historic house on rolling farmland that might be part of a historic district, might be situated along an entrance corridor or along a scenic stream, and there might be some land nearby in conservation easement. While protecting all of our resources might not be practical, we could look at these abundant resources more holistically and study how they're layered and see where those overlapping resources can help set priorities for what might be protected and for what sort of regulations might be most efficient. We have a couple of specific questions for you. One, does the commission support the concept of that overlay study to help set protection priorities and identify methods of protection? Question two, does the commission support establishing regulations to protect cultural resources? And then just generally questions on your feedback and any questions that you might have. I think we're going to stop here and get your feedback. Thank you.
Awesome, well, thank you. I, I think the first note that I took was something about, could not agree more with this chapter. It differentiates and what is what makes Albemarle special and unique. So I think all the work that you've done here, I think, is really helpful. So thank you. So why don't we start with any general questions for staff? Firehawk, I'll start with you.
Um, okay. I'm on the committee, so we already wrestled with a lot of this stuff. But um, one question I had when I was looking, I know this is objectives, but we were talking, it says, objective 5.3, evaluate and consider establishing a local scenic highway overlay with design standards. And in my understanding of scenic highways in Virginia is that long ago, I think the original intent was for them to have more protections, and that that all got weakened a long time ago. So that's my question, is like, what can we do in terms of scenic highways? We've got ones designated, but like, how does it help us actually?
So what this action is talking about is a local scenic highway, it's not a state scenic highway.
Okay.
And so if we were to pursue that, we would establish local regulations. We had local scenic highways before we had the entrance quarters.
Okay.
When we put the entrance quarters in place, the scenic highway designation went away. The thinking then was that the entrance quarter regulations would do more than the scenic highway did. But I think what we're finding is that there are some streets that would benefit from that scenic protection that the entrance quarters aren't really getting at.
Right, because we thought we had more entrance quarters, and then VDOT came and said, no, you can't have these other, you have to take the roads off your roads. Too comprehensive.
Right.
Okay.
That's part of it, and just also that some of those streets, even that still have the entrance quarter designation, the ones that are in the more rural areas, could benefit from that, a more scenic focus, maybe less of an architecture focus.
Okay, so under our local ordinances, we would, we have the enabling authority from the state to be able to establish additional standards for local scenic highways?
That's my understanding.
I'm excited. Right, thanks.
We are too.
Mr. Karazana, any questions?
It's a great chapter, really appreciate it. I did have a question. It was a conversation when we started, the first time we talked about this. And that is adaptive reuse as a strategy to not only preserve, but revitalize historic resources. Didn't really see much of that in here. I know that there was potentially some conflict with what the board might have suggested on adaptive reuse. But I do think that we should consider incorporating some of that as a strategy, because there's plenty of examples where you can take even at a home, and they turn into restaurants. In fact, I just, I was in Pennsylvania, a conference in Penn State, and we had dinner at an 1819 home. Actually, that dates further back than that, but the section that we were in was 1819. And it, you know, wasn't a very fancy place. And it was certainly, you could tell it was historic, and it had its quirks, and wasn't handicap accessible in most places. But it did have an area that could be handicap accessible. So you can certainly consider that. You know, we have great examples here of similar, Willem Mills, obviously, but industrial, historic, that has been revitalized. And so I would include adaptive reuse as a strategy.
Mr. Claiborne?
I couldn't agree more with my fellow commissioner with that last statement. But I do want to congratulate staff. As I was reading through this, I thought you all did an excellent job in incorporating that past feedback and kind of rolling it up into this draft that we have in front of us here. To answer your questions at the end, I think absolutely yes. And I think it will become increasingly important as we look at the competing priorities. We think about how does solar play into this? How do data centers play into this, right? So I think those competing priorities will necessitate some kind of regulations and some parameters for us as we move to continue to protect our cultural resources. One question I did have around the support cultural and historic tourism. I didn't see anything in the document around partnerships, particularly with the city or the university. I know that probably can be a sensitive thing, but I was wondering if you could just maybe respond to that. Is that on purpose, or is that something that just didn't make it in, or?
Definitely not on purpose. I think we can take a look and find a way to incorporate that.
Okay. And then historic preservation ordinance and so forth. Would that be done internally or through a consultant? I was just curious.
Great question.
To be determined.
Right.
Yep. And then one thing I saw was the Carl Elafonte quote, and just maybe provide some context on who that individual is. Like, I know who he is, but like, in the report here, he's actually a great friend of mine, past president of the AIA. Just say like who he is, just so.
So that was included, and if he's a great friend of yours, you'll be able to do much better description of who he is. But I wanted to include that quote just to get at the climate action aspect of it, and just, you know, the buildings that are existing to get at the adaptive reuse issue as well. It's just that they're, it's a great place to start. We don't have to knock them down and start over.
Sure, that's great. That wasn't meaning to put you in the spot. It was more so in the report, just after his name, this little header by like, the title.
Got it. Sure. And Mr. Claiborne, what was his title with the AIA?
He's one of our past presidents.
Okay.
I have to look at what year. Then he was also a practitioner, very well respected, and author now as well.
No problem, we can add that.
Yeah, like, if you need help on that, I can certainly help you.
Yeah, so, you know, so one of the things that occurs to me, first of all, as everyone else has said, I think this is great work. You know, I appreciate everything that's been done on this. But, you know, you spoke about layers of different resources that occur in the landscape. One of the things that when this was brought before the Natural Heritage Committee, and we had a peek at it, was that there's often an overlay also between biodiversity and some of these historic sites. Some of the historic properties in Albemarle County are also some of the only sites in the county for rare plants or rare natural communities. So I'm thinking about this too. How do you see this interacting with the rural area plan that's been proposed and blending those different resources together to?
Yeah, I think it's definitely very closely related. I think they should be done simultaneously if one is not a subset of the other. I think we need to be looking at it all together.
I'll have more specific things later when we get into the items.
Great. Mr. Bivens, any questions, clarifying questions?
Um, oh, I, well, you know, at this point in the day, I never know whether or not it's a clarifying question, or it's a leading question, or it's a rhetorical question.
They're all.
They're all that and above, right? They're all that and above, so we'll go on from there. I will say that I was, it was helpful to understand, to see the history of the preservation ordinance. And, but I wasn't, when I got to the end, I was waiting for like the punch. And so I'm assuming that it doesn't exist at this point. We don't have a full-fledged.
Correct.
Okay. And so at some point, if we're going to discuss that, of course, I have lots to say about that.
Are you talking about the implementation part of it?
Or the fact that we don't even have one drafted?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I probably have lots to say about that. And then there was one thing that I was sort of trying to just get a better clue on, is that when on page, I think it's 14, you list the certain things that have happened in our community, or where they happened, where they happened. Let me get back to, you know, the cultural resources today. I didn't, I didn't see the through line to the objectives. So where would some of those things, as we're talking about, as you're thinking, sort of responding, if you talk about where you might see these regional events? Because if we look at the objectives, I didn't necessarily see where those might be included or looked up to or sort of pointed to.
Well, I think there's a connection to tourism. But you're right, there's not a specific action that's directly related.
So if it's too tourism, I would ask that we look broader than that, because it really is about the quality of life here. And I don't want to do things for people who drive through here. I want to do things for people who make their homes here. And so that's, that's the kind of, the piece here that we're talking about is sort of what are the, what are the cultural resources that make up this place that everyone says is so grand? And that's for us. That's for us. And so I want to, I want to, I like that. I was appreciative of it, but I wanted to see how we could hang. And maybe this isn't the place to do it. Maybe there's someplace else in the comp plan. I was glad to see it, and I was struggling with where I might, how I might be able to, in another life, speak publicly to this if I was so called to at another time in my time here. And so there was that. And then there's also this balance that I have to say, you know. So I also always come back to, and you'll help me with this. The county, so staff often has to either deal with existing ordinances, and that's where the work that you do with the ARB is. So because there's this body of ordinances that you sort of do. Or they often have to deal with the fact that someone's, there's a proposed or an alleged violation. Okay, and that's how we get engaged and stuff. And so I'm trying to figure out if we've, if we're going to sort of go along the lines of shaping or embracing some of the historic resources here. And I should say, I was thankful for the way you laid out the tension between some of our structures and the reasons that those structures exist. And I'm taken back to my colleague's comment about a piece we're going to see tonight. And he talks about sort of the community that was on Morgantown Road. And the person responded, well, you know, slavery's just always been a part of the Virginia vernacular. Well, that's like, whoa, okay, so that's how we're going to deal with this now. You know, I was like, I'm trying my best to just stay there, but that was offensive. And so the idea of what are the cultural resources that are here that are absolutely worthy for what they are, but they also sit here in context of something that we need to continue to struggle with or continue to wrestle with, and that's all. And so that's why I was pleased to see what you had on 14, but I was trying to figure out, how do you lay that in? And so your narrative coming into this, I thought if you can capture that somehow from the notes, I think that's a wonderful pretext about the tension that I think Albemarle County sits in, that we have. You know, I'm thinking about the solar thing on Secretary Road, where the people there didn't want their view interrupted, and their view was from a plantation house. It's like, hello. If you'd been here 200 years before, you would have seen people in the valley there scrubbing and doing stuff. And so it's just the context and the time in which these historic contexts, I said, historic resources sit today, I think is important for us. It's important for staffing for us to deal. And I have some other thing to share, but that was, I was struck by page 14. I was glad to see it, didn't know how we would do it. And then I was struck by, I was particularly struck by the opening comments and sort of openly acknowledging that this is something that we're going to have to sort of figure out how to wrestle with. I don't, I don't think there's going to, I don't think there's a A, B, or C answer, but we do need to be engaged in wrestling with this.
Mr. Moore?
I had a broad scope question. My background, bachelor's and master's degrees are in anthropology and archaeology. So I have both an interest in kind of the current cultural, that was my main focus, but also did a little digging work over the years to make a few bucks and, you know, make sure there wasn't like a burial mound where somebody wanted to build a pipeline. But the reason I bring that up is there's this lovely page about cultural resources today, and it's got, you know, Juneteenth, and the Festival of the Book, and the Film Fest, and the Arts and Crafts Festival, and the Ivy Creek Natural. And, you know, all these things that in my day job, we actually kind of help with. And I'm really glad to be a part of that cultural institution around here. But there's a disconnect with the goals. There's a disconnect between these cultural resources today and the, all the goals. All the goals are just about preserving historical structures and land. And I don't know that at this late stage, there's a lot we can do about that. But I feel like, like, if we're talking about cultural resources, there's like literally nothing in any of the actions and objectives about sort of like helping support that, sort of like the cultural things that are on this page. And I was sort of sad about that, so. And then I think the rest of my, the rest will be more discussion. I don't know that I have other clarifying questions at this point.
Awesome, I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, and I'm on page 15, I'm looking, oh, sorry, page 16. You mentioned investigate legal tools for historic preservation, including a demolition ordinance. Can you talk a little bit more about what that would entail or what that ordinance might have in it? Is it just?
Sure. Some historic preservation ordinances include demolition regulations. But they're, you could consider just doing a demolition ordinance without everything else that would be in a standard ordinance. And that would give you an opportunity to, at the very least, require documentation of the resource before it's demolished, possibly charge fines for structures that are demolished without permits and without, without the documentation.
Yeah.
It could also be something that requires the property owner to try to sell the building, you know, to sell the property so that the resource can stay in place. I think those would be the primary.
Okay. And we don't have any requirements now, right, to document historic resources before we demolish them?
We don't have any requirements, no regulations. It is the Historic Preservation Committee's policy to request access to the property to, so that committee members can document it. But if we, they don't have to. They're not required to.
4.1 mentions real estate tax incentives to encourage retention of historic structures. Is that something that has been talked about beyond this goal or this action? Are there, just curious, or is that just sort of an aspirational goal to?
I think at this point, it's more aspirational. It's not been discussed in detail.
Okay. 4.4, establish and make available a toolbox for restoration and reuse, kind of getting to what I guess Commissioner Karazan mentioned as well.
Right.
Do you have a framework for that? Is that, have you seen that used in other areas? Just curious why that came up.
I think there's a need for property owners to be able to go somewhere and just find some connection to resources, either people or documents or.
Grant opportunities, tax credits.
All that.
I got you.
All that.
Yeah, okay. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, just need a place to start, you know. It can be overwhelming if you've never done it before. So somewhere that it can go and get a start.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, 100% agree. I just, I wonder if toolbox is the right word. I'm not sure if that's definitive enough. You may want to consider tweaking that. Underscoring, this isn't a question, I guess, as much as just underscoring Commissioner Claiborne's comments about partnership. You know, we've, on my day job, we've been working a lot on the Birdwood Mansion, and just, it's really been the partnerships with the descendants of enslaved communities, with genealogists, with Monticello, with Highland, with Ashland, you know, it used to be Ashland. But all those other resources have really been helpful. And I don't know if there's an objective in here. Maybe it's already in here or an action that talks about building a database, some sort of a combined, you know, maybe even the county becomes a convener of these groups. So there's an opportunity to leverage the horsepower, the work that's already been done in this area, but that somebody is retaining that information in a central database. And we've been using universities, so that could be an area that we could partner on as well. I think that repository, I guess, would be a good opportunity.
And Mr. Missile, just for clarification, was that an inventory of partners, organizations? Or was it an inventory of the historic resources?
It's a great question, sorry. It was, it was mostly a genealogical database.
Okay.
So as people are trying to understand their relationships. So as people are trying to understand their relationships to others and tying it back to, um, enslaved labor and those times, I think having that, you know, the family tree, basically, in a sense, um, is really critically important. Because people are learning more every day about that.
Can I just add to that? So I think it, it can go beyond that and, you know, in, in one point three, you talk about a GIS layer. So I think that, that there's, uh, a lot of opportunities to also collaborate with UVA and perhaps others that have information. And you can help to build on it, so not necessarily starting from scratch, because there are, there, there is some databases out there and GIS expertise that might be able to help.
Yeah, great point. Um, and then the last question I had is on five point six. It talks about revising the entrance corridor design guidelines to elevate the quality of design and include corridor-specific criteria. The elevating the quality of the design piece, I mean, I, you know, I'm all in on it. I just wondering what, how we define that and how we don't just add cost, right? But that is, it's, we're considering kind of that more sort of, I guess, subjectivity to design and what that looks like and how that plays out.
Good comment, we'll take another look at that and then, um, can go back and look at the, uh, ARB's comments and see if we can flesh that out a bit.
Great, but aligning them with districts, I think, is really, is a really great idea. Yeah. All right, um, do you mind putting your slide up with the questions that you want us to tackle? And we can start with, uh, first one, which is, I think, does, yeah, do we, does the commission support the concept of an overlay study of cultural resources to help protect? How do we want to do this? Do we want to just kind of go around and answer all of these at once? Why don't we do that? Uh, we can start with Commissioner Moore, if you're ready.
Sure. Um, you know, I think, again, just kind of echoing what some of the folks said earlier, I am glad to hear of the interest in focusing on, on, um, you know, modest buildings and workers' homes and the relationship with those homes and the land. Um, I think as far as the first one, this is kind of the, the objective one kind of question. Um, you know, taking an inventory, yeah, yeah, I think it'd be great to have an inventory that's more updated. Uh, that makes a lot of sense when it comes to historic preservation or just historical awareness of what we've got. Um, as far as the, and, and educational programs too, all the parts that are in objective two, the sort of broadly speaking, letting people know what's here, having like impactful interpretive events and programs and, and public sites that we can visit to do all that. Uh, we get into objective three, which is kind of the second question here, uh, supporting, establishing regulations to protect cultural resources. I, I, I think there, for me, it's a big depends and, and, and given the way that some other places that look like us have weaponized historic preservation to preserve everything in amber and let nothing happen ever, I am skeptical. Um, you know, yeah, I, I, I do support some regulations that protect certain sites, for sure. Yeah, narrowly tailored if it serves people today. You know, would I support those, say, turning over eighty-three thousand acres of the Southern Development, Southern Almaral Historic District, just to wholesale preservation in eighty-three thousand acres? I'm not so sure about that. What I kind of see here, maybe, and I don't know, maybe it's just that skepticism that I'm bringing, but it, it feels like another, like, like we're, we're preserving a particular aesthetic in amber uh, through some of this. And, and on top of that, with four point one, like giving tax breaks to landowners with means along the way. Um, and, and so that's, the, the, the sort of rough question I, I kind of come around to is, what are we preserving? And, and, and a lot of it functionally is going to be that white people with means have tended to fetishize a particular aesthetic. Uh, and, and what I'm reading kind of, i- is that here or is that something else? You know, that's, that's actually more impactful for how people live today. And so I think for me, fundamentally, it's this question, like, do we, do we have a county that, that evolves and grows and serves people's needs today? Or is it, is it just gonna like put it all in amber? Um, a- and we can learn from our history, we can absolutely preserve certain things and, and tell those stories, the good and the bad and the ugly. And we can maintain a certain, you know, pool of, of meaningful public historic sites, things that people actually visit and learn from. Um, and, and incorporate those historical understandings into the lessons and how we build a better future where the people of today can thrive. Um, I just don't know if that means though, that like everything has to be preserved in amber. How's that for my first comment? Commissioner?
Do you have any questions or feedback on content or objectives, other than what you just, I guess?
I think I covered, uh, objectives one, two, three, and four.
Okay, awesome, great. Commissioner Vivens?
So, so I won't, I won't, I won't, um, I will extend a bit. Because I think really, let, let's start from the narrative that people have heard me over my time on the, um, on the commission, my pushback about Monticello's ability to control what's in front of it. So we gave to Monticello, while it's not in the ordinance, but we gave the bully pulpit to Monticello to control what's seen from the mountain without extracting any taxes for it. And that's offensive to me. Because as I shared the numbers, if you look at Monticello's, and I'm sure people are freaking out, but it is, it's offensive to me. Look at their, look at their nine ninety. Look how much money they bring in on an annual basis. Look at the intent of their endowment. And then tell me that they should not have some obligation to be engaged with what the views and what the development of this community is, besides saying, we want you to roof this color, we don't want you this tall, and we don't want any reflection that comes through the magnificent, the two magnificent magnolia trees that block the view anyhow, when you go up there. So for me, the piece is, when I look at this, does the commission support the concept of overlay of studying and cultural resources, help to set to protect the priorities and identify targeted methods of protection? The answer, of course, is yes. But then when I go to the subtext on that is, who's on the committee? How broadly do we reach in? And what are we looking at as we try to evolve and try to continue to do what we need to do? I have said it quietly to people, but we are in the present transportation situation because eastern and western bypasses were blocked by very wealthy people. Whole host of reasons are there, good, bad, or indifferent. Today is not my time to go back and relitigate that. But because of a certain group who made decisions based on their lifestyle, and I need to add, the by, the, the western bypass would have come two hundred yards from my property. But it was okay, because it would have preserved a main street in Albemarle County. And people wouldn't have driven down there, so they wouldn't have known I was down there, so that would have been good. And so my question is, at the end of the day, what are we doing? This sort of echoes off of my colleague to my right. What are we doing with our historic preservation? Uh, I will say, if it is in amber, we should auction it, because then you can sell it as jewelry and do all kinds of things like that. But the, but the piece is, is that we need, if we're going to, if we're going to sort of engage in this, I think there needs to be a reevaluation of what our shared history is. Because today it feels like our history was self, was determined at another time and by another set of people. And that does not feel, that does not feel sustainable going forward. Those of us who remember what happened in twenty seventeen, part of what happened in twenty seventeen in August was there was a deep conflict with, with, what is history? And what needs to be prepared and what needs to be preserved? I don't believe that's going to go away. And so I would like Albemarle County to be in a position to think about how we're going to have those conversations of what is our shared history? And these, and, and many of these action items do that. But my piece is not with the action items, my piece is with the agendas that go with the action items. Who's involved in those conversations? How are we lifting those things up to people so that people can be involved in those? And we can draw people into those and have a robust conversation? You know, I, I would say, we, we, we have a couple of things that I, that I can speak more further and more closely to, but I think for right now, I, I'm, I'm, I'm good on that. I agree with that we should do this. I, I just would like to know, for me, the enthusiasm is in the details. Is it, is in the work plans around, around those objectives.
Can I, can I just kind of riff off that for one second? I, I mean, I completely agree. For me, I think the definition or the, the special consideration that some of our historic resources have will be, um, almost, I guess, there'll be more of a, a level playing field with this approach, which I think is the goal.
That would be good.
So you're not like looking at the president's homes and saying, okay, they're going to get extra special treatment because you're bringing subjectivity into it, right? You're saying they're more important for these reasons. But to your point, which was a great point, this is much more, um, what's the word that you used here? Comprehensive. And so the, in objective, or I guess it's objective one. You know, the, the words that give me a bit of peace and I think will help with what you're saying, Commissioner Vivens, is that idea of a comprehensive inventory and then those things that are listed. And then below that, in action one, one, including but not limited to.
Right.
Those are, and so to your point, I think the definition of what that is needs to be workshopped, right?
Yeah, I mean, I will share with you, though, I actually shared with a number of other institutions the work that you're, that you and, and the foundation have done on Birdwood. Because I, I was involved with Birdwood when it was just like, oh, this is still, it's a lovely place, but it's scary. I can't even think how much money you'd have to put in this. And so seeing that presentation, I don't know, seeing a presentation about Birdwood and, and the, the, and the adaptive use of the mansion.
Yeah.
And the, the sort of, uh, genealogical survey of the people who lived there and the people who this was the place that they lived, died, were born, lived, and died. I, I shared that with a number of people, that this is a way in which you can do, you can take a, a place that has to turn a profit at some point. This is not a nonprofit thing, this is a business that's got to turn a profit. But you can tell a story, a narrative about it that feels as if you're releasing some of that. You're releasing some of that burden.
Yeah.
As opposed to creating another level of burden. Because I was, I would, I would say, and as we go into this, the piece for me about, about the, about increasing another level of ordinances, is I don't want the ordinances, or I don't want, it's not for me to want or not want. I would be, I would be uncomfortable with ordinances becoming millstones around property owners next.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That, to me, feels as if we're doing the same thing.
Right.
You know, I'm recalling the, the, the farmer that wanted to put a, 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 a cell tower out on his farm out there in Whitehall, but the people who wanted to sip wine didn't want to see the cell tower.
Right.
Well, you know, I'm real sorry, I want that guy to be a farmer. You know, if, if we are so wedded to agriculture, I want that farm to be able to be there at the end of the day. And so, you know, blink real hard when you sip your wine. And it's, and it's, so it's that, and so it's that kind of, that kind of, let's not make, let's not make the preservation of a lifestyle an impediment to the future.
Yeah, and just the last thing I'll mention on, on that, I think the, the good, it's a value proposition, I think, in a sense, right? Which is we're trying to identify the value of historic resources and what are they and how they're diverse. Um, and so I think that's cultural two, right? Which is, you've got, you've got cultural one, which is we're going to document this, we're going to think through it, we're going to make this comprehensive. And then you've got cultural two, which is, we're going to educate. This is why it's important, these are why these things are critical. And it's not just the president's homes, it's all those other resources. So I think they pair up really well. So, sorry, Commissioner Murray, I went out of order.
That's okay. So, so first, um, looking at action one point two, and I'm seeing that we call out specifically, um, black African-American cemeteries um, for, you know, being inventoried and, and protected. And, and it strikes me that it's, although I think that's a very important thing, it's a noble goal, that why are we just limiting ourselves to cemeteries? Um, because we have these black communities, and as you called out early in the presentation, we have these communities of living people, um, that, that are equally worthy of protection and, um, and support. And, and I think one of the reasons this is important, you know, is if you look at the history of what's happened to a lot of communities, um, is that, you know, black Americans are seventy-five percent more likely to, to live near hazardous waste facilities compared to other racial groups. So it's very, if we don't classify where these communities are and we, we don't give them the same accord as we do other historic resources, then, then there's a real danger that someone, the next time there is a new chemical factory that someone's, you know where this would be a great place to put it, let's put it here.
I, I think we should put it in White, in, in Whitehall.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, and in, in fact, this is not a hypothetical. I mean, if you look at Greenwood, Greenwood has, um, has a significant population of African-Americans that live in Greenwood. And there was indeed a chemical plant there that did explode, um, and contaminated that community. So this is something that we've, we've, we have dealt with that as communities. So I think, I think there should be some action items specifically in here about engaging our historic, um, African-American communities in the rural area, um, and, and asking them what their, their needs are. Um, and, but, but also taking them into consideration during things like special permit, um, you, you know, processes. You know, I think we, we often give that consideration to other historic properties. So I think we should give that same, um, consideration to, to our African-American communities and they come before us. If, if there's a little bullet point that says whether it affects the Monticello view shed, um, then certainly we can include a little bullet point that says this affects, you know, this, this community.
So can I just ask staff a question on that? Did you, you specifically called out county cemeteries as a, as an action item? Was there a reason you, you kind of carved that out?
Uh, historic preservation committee has been interested in, um, um, creating a database or, or a GIS layer of, uh, cemeteries. Um, and it's just been an important thing for a long time that we haven't been able to get to. Um, and so we did call it out as a individual item there.
Got it, so it's kind of an action item thing, sort of. So is there, is there an action item in here that speaks to the idea of the sort of living cultural resources?
Um, I think that, uh, we could find a way to emphasize that more. I, I, I think it's not something that's in here at the moment.
Okay.
So, so that's. Chair, I would suggest that we also put the last one in there, because it would seem that one point four, we're really talking about what are the, what are the people who are landed here?
Mm-hmm.
And so what, what are we doing? I mean, that's, I, I sort of, I'm not trying to dismiss the, 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 the work on cemetery, which there has been a lot of discussion about that across, across time. But also you're trying to say, there's a group of peoples here that have been forgotten. And so let us, let us be about the work of not forgetting, forgetting them on the long term.
Yeah. Were you gonna say something, Commissioner?
Yeah, it's, I had the same, um, thought when, when I just saw that one line item with the cemetery, which is, which is great. Um, there's a lot we can learn from cemeteries and, actually, my church, I'm actually in the Cemetery Commission, which, never thought I would do that, but I'm involved in that.
Commissioners, you're commissioning twice.
I am, yeah. Um, it's really committee, not commission, that's just mystical. But, um, it occurred to me, because where I live used to be a, a Freeman, it's by Morgantown, near that. And so there, there was an old black schoolhouse there, it was almost like a single-room schoolhouse. And, um, I'm sure those are scattered all over Albemarle County. And so we're losing those. And as well as Freeman, all the Freeman buildings, that, uh, there's, there's one near where I live. And it's in really bad state, but we're also losing the people that had the history there. Um, so they can't afford to live there or pay, pay the property taxes and they're moving. And so we're losing that and you're going to lose that culture. So there, I, there, I would say that there is a urgency to getting this done and, and start, and starting that survey, the study, uh, the GIS mapping, and more importantly, uh, documenting the conversations that you have and recorded history of, of those that still actually have a memory, uh, of going to the schoolhouse of, you know, and, and what some of these houses meant and their ancestors, they were, they were, uh, working in those houses, uh, which are still there, but they're in really bad shape, some of these, um, Freeman, um, houses, so. I, I guess my point is, I definitely think that there should be expansion on, on that point of, of cemeteries.
Thanks.
Commissioner Murray, you want to keep going? So, and then also, um, you know, under, under the, the section of your time belts, current cultural resources, let's see, yeah, cultural resources today. I think it's important to, to call out, um.
Sorry, where are you?
Oh, so, sorry, it's, um, where they have cultural resources today?
Page fourteen.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, thanks, sorry, I should have given them. So I think, um, one of the important, important things to call out. Yeah. Thanks. Sorry, I shouldn't have done that. So I think, um, one of the important, important things to call out are, you know, I think about Batesville. And I think about, um, you know, the, the apple butter festival. There's several, some of those that occur throughout the community about the, you know, we have these agricultural events that still occur in our community. They're very important. And so I think that that's something, um, there should be reference there, you know, the importance of the, the Rortons and, and other community organizations that, you know, host these important community events around, around the county. I think that's an important thing that we should recognize. And then, um, jumping down to, um, objective five, four, um, preservate, so we have this thing about preserving, um, the scenic, um, the, the roadsides. And hence the appearance of county roads by establishing programs to reduce litter, which is good, like that. Um, but there's this to maintain landscape and other vegetation. I think we need to be very specific there. And I think we need to, I would change that to preserve, um, native vegetation. Um, because there's a real risk there that someone at some point is going to interpret that as um, that we need to herbicide our roadways as some other localities do. Um, and we do have important by the, we have important resources, some of which my wife and I just discovered that, and on the roadsides that it could be wiped out if someone changes their policy about how we see roadsides. So recognize that these are, roadsides can be very important refuges for, for native plants and, and natural communities. And then I think, I mean, actually the thing I'll, I'll circle back to, just going back to the thing about the cultural events um, and these, these, you know, even things like we have the peach orchards, like Charles and Henley Peach Orchard. I think it's important, you know, a lot of these, of these communities, in order to support these cultural events, they do take county resources. Um, sometimes they'll, they'll need the support of the police to manage traffic or they'll need other things. I think, um, stating upfront that we are supportive of those events and maintaining those cultural traditions um, helps set the, set it so when they come forward and say, hey, here's something we need, we can justify those expenses to help support the community when they need it.
Awesome.
I had offered most of my comments earlier in the conversation, but I'm curious around, uh, the comment around sense of urgency. And with our budget that was just passed at the county, do we have a sense of how much money was allocated to some of the items that are in here? Like, do you think we could start some of this stuff next year? Or is this a twenty twenty-seven, or we're kicking the can down the road? Just, do we have a sense that, cause I'll tell us the priority level, right? The money talks. So do we have a sense of roughly how much was budgeted? Or some of these activities around cultural resources?
I, I would say nothing's been budgeted at this point.
Okay. No further questions, Your Honor.
Commissioner Carazana?
Uh, you put the questions back up there. I mean, I, so my comments really were focused around one and just that the study and yes, I agree, um, that we should. And, and as I mentioned earlier, I think there's also re- resources where you can partner with. Yes, to two. I think that's, uh, given we're supporting this chapter. And so the only other questions that I had, I've already at, um, asked several questions that I, that I had from, from reading the chapter. I did have a question on three point one. Establish your historic preservation ordinance with a broad view of eligibility criteria. You explain that a little bit. I mean, it just, I'm not, I'm not quite picking up on the
Sure.
On what you're getting at.
Yeah, it's just getting at the idea that, um, at one point in time, the focus really was on those high style architecture examples. And this is to make, make it clear that it, it should be more broad and, and, and um, address the things that the county finds to be important.
To the point, the chair missile was pretty, we're, we're taking a wider lens.
Yes.
Got it, got it. It just wasn't clear to me from there.
But that's a good point. Maybe, maybe, maybe it's a semantics thing, right? Like.
I think I would actually.
Broad view.
An inclusive look at rich and varied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not the words that get up in the dais here, but that, that, that broad view is actually kind of what freaked me out a little bit. It's like, are we gonna just, you know? Yeah. Make it all historic?
Um, well, we, we've, we've had that conversation, you know, when, when, um, the, um, cellphone, uh, cell tower overlay or, or whatever that was done, that Bill was doing, went before the supervisors, there was a lot of conversation about, are we excluding? Just because it's a historic district, are we just going to exclude a tower there because of title? Because it's ti- because this area is titled historic, a historic resource? Are we going to do some analysis to see whether or not, what would the impact be if a tower went in here? So what would the, what would the, what was sort of the impact on the historic district be if we put a tower there? I think that's this, that's the same kind of, that's the same kind of issue. And coming alongside of that, that comes to my piece about, about given we have, gi- given that the majority of the county's resources, financial resources comes from residential property, from property. Many of you've heard about, you've heard my uncom- be my, the degree that I'm uncomfortable about giving tax breaks to enti- to entities that, that really are engaged in other kinds of behavior. So that I would not want to minimize, or I would not like to minimize the amount of funds that the county derives from its limited resources until other people are elected supervisors, who will bring all kinds of economic development here. And then when that happens, I'll be, I'll, I'll sort of mitigate this. But that, but that, what we're doing every time we provide tax breaks to something, we're making a decision that I don't know this necessarily shared by the bulk of the community. And so while I think that's a way to do it, I don't necessarily know that, and I'm not looking at, you know, why I'm, I, well, I do believe in democracy. I don't believe in, in, in polls. And I don't think we should poll, we should poll our way through government. Um, and that, and that I think that some of this, we, it feels, particularly in today's world where the tax code is very complicated. The typical person is not going to know how he or she should navigate the tax code to be able to get the, the appropriate level of, of, of rebates. So they can do whatever it is they want to do to their farmhouse, or they can do it to their cabin. And so I want to be real careful that we don't use the tax code to, to again, give people a leg up. You know, so my, 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 my tax accountant will know how to do it.
So you're, you're largely talking about action four, one.
Correct.
And I'm wondering, you, you know, I totally get your point. I'm wondering if even that wording is limiting that it talks about real estate taxes, could, could that just be adopting a variety of incentives?
I would be fine with that.
Encourage retention of historic resources.
And I, and I, and I would, I think retention is fine, but it revitalization is even better. And particularly if it's actually being put to, to a use that's particularly if it's a commercial use, so you're getting even more benefit from it, right?
Yeah.
And that, to me, that's where the adaptive reuse could potentially come in. So you're bringing new life into the place and you're bringing more people in there and you're actually utilizing it for something other than a museum. I mean, it's fine if it's a museum, but could potentially be more.
Retention and revitalization of this. Yes, Commissioner Fireot.
Um, so anyway, to answer the two questions are up, yes, okay. I did want to just say a couple more words about ordinance though, and then I did actually have an additional action to suggest. So in term, just to, just remind you all, um, I've said this before up here. The, the historic preservation committee, one of the tasks we do each month is to look at the list of demolition permits. And then we also discuss which, if any of the resources were going to be allowed to go and document before it's destroyed. And that, and that's it. And, um, it, it is very disheartening. It's like a, you know, like depressing funeral march of just watching things disappear. Um, and, and I wish, I almost wish I bought my copy of Lost Virginia, that book of all the lost general stores and schools and buildings that have gone away in Virginia. And, you know, I don't want to preserve the county in amber, but although I, I do like amber as well, but, um, I, I just think that we have to have some way to have a little bit more teeth. I've worked in, you know, in Charlottesville, when I was on that commission, I preside over the creation of five additional historic districts. And I did deal with people who's, who would say, well, I, you know, I can't protect this historic structure. And if you don't, if you, you know, it's just going to fall down and it, it's already so far gone, you know, after we let the hole in the roof rain through for years on purpose. Um, and then in saying no, you cannot take that down magically, magically, they were able to find the resources to restore it. And today are like, look at my beautiful historic site that I had as a developer, had the vision, um, to see the beauty of this, this place. Um, so we need some teeth in this county. Now, there are lots of different tools and different varieties of ordinance, whether it's just like a demolition permit or whether it's on to a code that requires some conservation. In Charlottesville, we ran into the issue with you where you have low income neighborhoods and people can't afford to say like a standing sea metal roof or gosh forbid slate was the historic vernacular of that. Therefore, that's what you have to put back. Instead, we created sort of conservation light where you could put a ru- put a roof on. Yeah. And that's great, you know, and in, you, you couldn't rip the front porch off, but you, you could modify it. Um, so it, it really, it relaxed a lot of the sort of traditional historic preservation district standards to make it affordable and practical. But at the end of the day, you have structures remaining, you have structures standing. Uh, because we will hear time and again, that can't be saved. There's no way to make it work. You know, we, and we've heard it up here, you know, like if I have to save that manor house or that school building or that church, it'll ruin my entire development plan. There's no way to do it. I disagree. I think a lot of times there's a way to do it. It's just not the way they want to. Um, so I, I'd like to be able to, to tell a living history of our community by having in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. I mean, I won't be alive in fifty years, but, uh, maybe my ghost will visit. I'd like to be able to still understand that, that I'm in Almerell County. You know, that, that this place has a story. And to your concerns about the, like the preservation committee and, and dialogues that we've had there, we talk about historic schools and Rosenwald schools and everyday structures and even like traveler motels that, you know, people used to stay in when you could only get one car ride. You know, going twenty-five miles an hour, and that was where the next motel was found. And we've lost a lot of those. So we, we are very comprehensive in, in our consideration. Um, so anyway, those are some of my thoughts on that. I wanted to suggest a new act, additional action for the dark skies part, which some people might wonder, why is that in there? Well, part of our lived experience is the fact that it's, we're not lit up and so bright that we have an ordinance that does need updating. So thank goodness, maybe we'll finally get that done. Um, but I also wanted to suggest we add an, a, objective, which you can word however you like, but create a community education program to discourage excessive outdoor lighting and promote dark sky friendly lighting fixtures. Because the only way that we get to talk about these fixtures is when a new development comes forward. But most of the properties in Almerell County are like Ted's House and, you know, Sue's Store. And, and they're not asking to redesign it or get a zoning change or a site variance. So that lighting ordinance isn't going to come into play. And I think people just don't know. And I have seen, you know, where people will put like a spotlight all over their house and shine it up into the sky. Um, you know, we have sports fields, uh, not county owned, but that I see when I fly home at night that are brightly lit and no game is happening. It's nine o'clock at night and the whole field's lit up all night long. And, you know, that's just awful. So I, I think we need a whole campaign to get individuals to voluntarily do the right thing. And then maybe we, you know, look for grants for, you know, helping people get better lights or whatever. We can look at that later. But just something that is about the private sector that wouldn't be ever coming under this new and improved ordinance. And we need voluntary um, participation in trying to have dark skies.
So can I, can we add to that, Commissioner? The idea under six point one, that it's not just the community partners, which feels like sort of that amorphous group of individuals who always say, I'll write it, I'll write it. But that there are some entities that need to be involved. When you particularly, you give, you give, you, you, you call, you're calling out Scott Stadium when you fly home. Um, and that what, what we're really talking about is that the three jurisdictions, in addition to the community partners, but that the three jurisdictions
Absolutely.
should, should, should engage in, 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 engage in sort of a vibrant way to address um, the preservation of night sky. And, and I would, and I would also ask, could we then also include this in the, I know, I'm afraid, but you, you'll know Lonnie what it is, the bio something chapter. Because that's, that's also talking about this, how, how are we shifting? You know, you've spoken to this elegantly before. How, what are the lights, what is our lighting patterns doing to our, to our, to our natural wildlife? And so it's not only what it's doing to us and to this, to, to the sphere of what, where we live in, but it's also what are we doing to, and I don't know what that chapter is, Murray. You, you, I don't know, but you know. But could it also be some, a mention in there about how?
Yeah, it should tie, there should be something in there about, yeah, not kernel patterns and.
Environmental, no, the word, yeah, yeah. Environmental stewardship.
Yeah, you kind of beat me to it.
Back to the.
That was my.
Yeah. My, my, one concern I had actually about this being located in the cultural section was that people would, some people would see it here in the section and think that preservation of dark skies is purely aesthetic. Um, whereas.
It's, it's definitely for both reasons.
Yeah.
For, for, in, for environmental health of our wildlife and insects and for our enjoyment. And we live here too, right? So we are also animals.
So I mean, you know, there's a, there's been a precipitous decline in, um, in bird populations. And, you know, and particularly a lot of, a lot of birds that depend on, you know, large forest blocks, you know, and so you know, recently I've been hearing a, a whippoorwill in the mornings at, at my house, which is, is yeah, it was one of those birds that is in precipitous decline. And I am absolutely sure the reason that we still have whippoorwills in, in Sugar Hollow is because we don't have a lot of excess lighting. Um, we don't have a lot of unnecessary roads and, and so forth. So, um, yeah.
So to that point, you, you're, uh, in six point one is including LED lights. So there's a lot of research now about how LED lights are impacting, uh, birds. So, and UVA's got some research on that. Helen Wilson and the Office of the Architect can, can provide you with some of her research and what they've been doing in UVA and what they have found, because we had gone to LEDs. And now we're finding that there's, and she's also very involved with bird preservation. We've been doing a lot in terms of our glass in buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because of the bird strikes, so.
And, and also point out that we're very fortunate here, be, partly because we have the observatory at UVA and not strong, you know, the experts retired and present associated with that. But we have all these experts volunteering to bring this expertise to us for free. So unlike, um, you know, a solar or, uh, ordinances around solar or cell towers or data centers. We have people for free who are willing to be on a committee who are nationally renowned experts to help us craft this.
I would just note, uh, real quick, like that, you know, the ordinance or this, um, plan, we've tried to like sort of segregate things into different chapters and not mention them multiple times.
Yeah.
The lighting thing does show up in the environmental section already. And we've also mentioned it a little bit in the urban area of trying to have a little bit more lighting, if you will, in some of these activity centers for, uh, people to be walking around. So this, this is one topic that shows up a couple of different places.
Yeah, I think, I think the nice part about having that is that it gets people to look at other chapters. So. Yeah, exactly. I just want to make sure we're allowing enough time because I know we have one more piece that you guys have five minutes for. I just want to mention a couple of quick things. Um, one is, we talked a lot about partnerships. And I don't know how or where that should be in here and whether that should be in action or not, but I think it just, I can't even you know, highlight that enough, um, the importance of that. The other is arts. Is there anything in here that talks about the arts? I think it mentions the absence of a public art program, but I don't think there's any.
Two point seven, that's where.
Two point seven, is it?
Two point seven on page sixteen is where we, we're here. I think they've gone to. At the top of the page, see, placement program, including not limited to an arts public space program. See that?
This, oh, yeah, thank you.
Look on your screen, look on the, the.
Okay.
There it is there.
Yep, I got you.
The two point seven.
Okay. I just wonder if that's, um, including but not limited to an art in.
Okay, I just wonder if that's including but not limited to an art in place, places program, public places, okay.
Is that, is that what you're?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It just, I lost it. So maybe it's not, it's, you guys are way ahead of me.
Mr. Chair, can I make a very quick comment? This is unrelated to that, but I wanted to ask if, we have this picture of Finn Dowry on page eight. And Finn Dowry is actually one of our county success stories. That is not what Finn Dowry looks like today. Working, the Historic Preservation Committee, working with the owner, learning that they had this resource, new owner, cajoled them, because we have no ordinance, cajoled them into restoring it to an amazing job. So this is a case, I don't, I know you already typed at this, but there's a couple of pictures, maybe you could lose instead. Put the Finn Dowry as it was and Finn Dowry as it was restored. And that is a great argument for education because there's an owner who's like, I don't know what, what, what do you want me to do? How do I do it?
But you, but you know, that, that, that is actually, I think, as, as we were talking, that's what I was wrestling with. There are people who would normally, let's put, hold on, let me do this properly. If we were in other parts of the country, there is a network of craftspeople and, and, and materials which have been ref, not refurbished, but we, that have been taken back. I forget what that's called. There's a place in the reclaim, reclaim that it's part of the natural part of how you do your house. The natural part of how you do your house is not going to get something new. The natural part of how you do your house is they find something that's a bit older. And I, I can sort of share from, I live in a house that's approaching, that's approaching a hundred years old. The stuff that I had when I first moved into it, I can't buy anymore. They don't, and I even go out to, I even go out to Croze, to the old hardware store in Croze to try and find it. And they laugh, they say, we don't have that anymore. So I think part of what we're talking about is do we have the ecosystem to make it easy for people to make decisions about how they renovate their houses or how they update their houses? Or are we now being forced into a situation where we always have to go find a solution on a big box? And so having that kind of, that kind of directory of who can I get go to?
Yeah, I think that's all part of education. If we had a robust program, you could also have artisans and crafts persons that they exist in this community, but you have to go digging.
But you don't know where they are.
Yeah. I mean, I just had some brickwork done on my 1740 house. And the first question was, do you have any old bricks already? Thank God, yes, I do. I have piles of old bricks. So I was able to do the project, but not everybody does have piles of old stuff.
And you would appreciate that. My spouse says, what are we doing with the old bricks from the, from the former fire, you know, the fireplace is like, I'm just saving them. Now let's get them off the property.
All right, let's, um, let's.
Warehouse where everyone can share their stuff, right?
Yeah, so we'd only got about 15 minutes left. Let's go on to community resilience.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
And just real quick, Mr. Chairman, like, like to do a rewind. Missed the narrative on this slide when we did the handoff, but wanted to touch on these related chapters, some of which you all mentioned for the cultural resources. So it overlaps with thriving economy and our recreation tourism, tourism economy, transportation, as we discussed with the roads, rural area land use, environmental stewardship, as we noted with the dark skies, as well as parks, recreation, open, open space, because we, we do have some public land that preserves certain historic resources like the, the Ivy Natural Area. So I think that was really good feedback that we looked to those cross chapter items and we do a good job highlighting those. So moving on to resilient communities. This topic, we, we found that there was less content in this dress draft chapter than other chapters. And, and there was a strong overlap with other chapters, particularly the environmental stewardship chapter and the community facilities and services chapter. So what we've done is we've taken this content and we're going to relocate it to those two chapters. And that's what this crosswalk does that we provided for you. So it explains where the content is being moved to for these subtopics. So for this topic, the, the previous feedback that we've heard from, from you all is utilizing community hubs for disaster relief, and that would include weather related events, leveraging FEMA funding for disaster relief, setting carbon sequestration targets as related to climate action, addressing wildfire threats and evaluating the potential use of a fire risk overlay, protecting trees for carbon capture and as well as flood buffers and supporting local agriculture and community gardens. Feedback we've heard from the community that includes coordination with regional and state agencies for climate resilience, which isn't, you know, confined to boundaries, improving disaster preparedness, utilizing those community hubs for emergency relief and disaster respond, protection against severe weather events and droughts, flooding wildfires, support for local food systems and community gardens, reduction of waste and energy consumption. So in terms of these, these subtopics, community resilience hubs and local food systems, these are, are going to be moved to our community facilities chapter. So the relevant objectives are services and programs that benefit community health and wellbeing, as well as healthy and affordable local food systems. And then for the content that's being moved to the environmental stewardship chapter, we have the subtopics of environmental resilience, climate, climate adaptation and mitigation, findings and trends that detail risks and vulnerabilities, climate change and natural hazards, as well as renewable energy and solar. And the related objective is for the preparation and recovery from natural manmade disasters and impacts of climate change. So the related chapters to this topic, transportation, especially as relates to providing different modes of transportation, reducing vehicle emissions, land use, both within the development areas and rural area in terms of limiting sprawl, supporting rural and environmental resources, protecting those resources and utilizing efficient use of infrastructure. Parks, recreation, open space, preservation of these natural areas and green spaces. And for housing, locating housing in proximity to employment areas and services so that we're reducing vehicle miles traveled. So our, our focus questions for this topic. First, do you support expanding urban agriculture as a shared resource with a focus on public land? Or focusing on what is allowed on private property? And I suppose that could be an and and not an or, so just, you know. Yeah, just wanted your, your input and feedback on, on those aspects of urban agriculture. And then of course, just any general questions or, or feedback on, on the topic content and the objectives and actions.
Great. Anybody want to kick us off? Mr. Firecock?
No, I actually was just thrilled to see all of these things in here. So I'm quite happy.
Did anybody have?
I can weigh in a little, well, first echoing Commissioner Firecock, just I, I like the, the crosswalk and the way things have moved around. I think including a lot of those resilience sections and environmental stewardship makes a ton of sense to me because that's sort of the new, that, that, that chapter is now not just the preservation and the, the, the carbon neutral, but actually how do we deal with what's coming? So I really appreciate that. The question on urban agriculture, like I, I like the ideas, urban agriculture is one of those things that's like cool in theory, but when land is at such a premium, it's, it's actually not particularly efficient most of the time. Where it's been really dynamic and robust is, you know, some sort of marginal, like floodable places, like the Azalea Park Community Gardens, some other community gardens or in cities that just like have large swaths of, of sort of abandoned buildings. And so there's a lot of land just kind of sitting there. I don't know that we're, most of our development area is going to be the best candidate for this. I mean, gardens and stuff, absolutely. But if we've got public land that's big enough for like a real urban agriculture thing, I'd rather use it for like social housing.
Let me just push back on that a little bit, you know, and just using our neighbor Charlottesville as an example. And I'm probably going to get their name wrong. I think it's the Urban Agricultural Collective. They do some incredible work, you know, particularly working with lower income communities that otherwise might not have, you know, access to, to fresh vegetables. And so I think that, you know, that sort of effort, I think would be very valuable in Alamo County. And I think too, on the other side, I feel like Charlottesville has really shirked its, its opportunity for a farmer's market, a permanent farmer's market in Charlottesville. And if Charlottesville doesn't want it, we should consider it in Alamo. Because that is a, you know, you look at other, other towns, once again, I'm going to cite Roanoke. But you know, there's other places that do have permanent farmers markets and you see the economic activity that comes out of that. Just surely the number of people it brings in, but plus it's a great way to, you know, a lot of businesses start up as a little stall or a little shop and a, you know, a farmer's market. So it's a great incubator for the kind of, you know, stars would like to see the employee local people that encourage local agriculture. You know, and in the rural area, we have enough space, as you say, to, to have our own farm, to grow some tomatoes or corn or whatever. But in the urban area, you don't have that space. So things like farmers markets are really important so that you have access to that service.
And, and I want to clarify too, I think you're right about the urban agriculture program, the nonprofit in Charlottesville. That's also delivering a social good and an educational good, which is different from just delivering food. If we wanted to do it more efficiently, we'd go to the store and buy a bunch of tomatoes and give them to people that wouldn't otherwise have tomatoes. The investment is what I was talking about with the efficiency part. But that said, the social and educational priority, yeah, that's a great good. I would encourage, I, I'm glad to include that in my considerations in this case.
And if I could share, to sort of just extend that a bit. So at some point, we're going to be looking at what is the programming that's going to take place around community centers? And we're also hopefully going to have a more robust and sort of a, a less structured definition about what a community center is in spite of some of the uncomfortableness that that word makes from the community. So and among our, among our, our citizens. So thinking about, is that a place that not only do you do sort of after school sessions or that you do this kind of thing there? Or you do a plot of land that can be, that can be a community? But you start to program those in ways in which they become natural magnets to the people who are with easy distance to there. So I would hope that we'd start thinking about that. You know, I was trying to give some sense to, you start on page three of the previous one where you talk about green spaces. And so I went quickly and sort of didn't, did some sort of just summing up some rough sums. We have about 4,500 acres of parkland. That's not including, that's not including the Hayward Track. That's not including Buck Island and that's not including Arrowhead. So if we were to include those other things, we'd have something like 5,000 acres, over 5,000 acres of, of parkland. And so you're talking about, how do we program those in ways? You know, we had some advocates for horse riding about here that came and said, we want a horse right here, we want a horse back there. What would happen if we had advocates for gardeners? Or advocates for those types of things that came here to say, we would like to, if you could prepare something for us. And I know this is, this is my, this is my district and so, and I know this area is sacred, same. But also if we were to carve out a bit in, in, in sort of the Charlotte Humphreys Park, which sits right across the street from a bunch of people. They say, we're going to carve out a little bit here, if you want to do, if you want to do a, we want to make it a center and we want to do a, a garden over there, there's a bit over here for you to do a garden. Because I think that's really in a time where we're, we're, we're trying to figure out where, where is our C, CPI? How flexible is our CPI? We're going to need to look for solutions or be able to supervise, are going to need to look for solutions that, that multiply assets as opposed to sort of being additive to assets because of the funds. And then the other thing that I can put onto this is, and I, and I'm not trying to be a doogie downer. But I think we also need to think about, so when we talk about resilience, we need to also talk about discord.
Discord.
Discord. I would not like us to have to do it on the sly, what happened in August, 2017. We need to be figuring out when those things start happening, that we are not sort of making it up on the fly. And so that's for people over there, that's what your, your first aid and your supervisors and your police officers and how that. But I think given some of the energy that exists around certain topics, that we should be prepared and that's a part of resilience on how we're going to deal with some of those things.
I had a, just a general question. I don't know if it fits here or not, but when I was looking through objective one and these are the actions to be added to the environmental stewardship chapter, just made me think, this is something I think Commissioner Carazana said a while ago, after an application that we saw that tapped into rural groundwater. Is there anything that we should be putting either in this or in the environmental stewardship chapter or somewhere that talks to the limited resource or groundwater resources that we have in Alamo County?
Well, Chair, remember, when, at one point we said, if, would it be possible to determine the aquifers?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Remember that? Remember, we had asked, since there's technology to do this now, is there a will, a way to determine the aquifers in the county? So that in fact, we're providing that kind of information. Cause it was also along the line of, given the new technology about steep slopes. Cause remember, we often have applicants that come to us with different ways in which they've measured the slope, which is not the way we've measured the slope. But is there modern technology that we could incorporate and incorporate to be able to get to water and to get to slope? Because that goes to usable land.
Yeah, and I think I was looking at 1.15, just in general, was talking about Alamo County Service Authority, ACSA and, and RWSA. Just again, rural water resources, aquifers, mapping those kinds of things. All right, we are at five 30. Any other comments, questions on this chapter? Anything staff would like to ask that we've missed?
Yes, sir.
Around the, um, the farmers picking up on what my colleagues are talking about in terms of like community gardens and so forth. Is there a way that we could incentivize that through just residential development, right? Talk about tot lots and nobody uses those, we have as if a community garden, like my neighborhood has a community garden and it's a lottery that everybody wants one, there's a lottery, there's not enough to go around. And so you have to put your name in the hat. If you're drawing, you get it for three years or whatever it may be. But instead of, you know, having requirements for tot lots, could that be replaced with a community garden as an option? Or how do we incentivize that in the urban or rural, not rural areas, the development areas, all the proposals that come to us?
Maybe it's just a use that we enumerate is allowed for open space or something in our stand, in our guidance.
Tots complain the gardening group.
They can pick the strawberries, you know? Pick the strawberry, our kids did.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to put us into recess until six o'clock, we'll reconvene at six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I'll call back into session, the May 27th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. And let's, I guess we don't have to reestablish a quorum. We have already established a quorum. Let's see, and before we open it up for public comment on matters pending before the commission, but not listed on the public hearing agenda, I will ask Mr. Herrick if he would like to introduce our new attendee.
Certainly, I'd be happy to. So, so Mr. Chair, as I've introduced individually to you, I'd like to introduce to the board as a whole, Jenny Teavendale. She is our newest attorney, at least for the next week. She may be new to our office, but she is not new to the practice of law. She started out in James City County like I did and worked there some with the planning commission. And then she's been in Alamo County for six years before being on an extended maternity leave. So she joined our office in, in April and we will be transitioning not only the planning commission, but the community development department to Jenny here in the coming weeks and months. So I wanted to formally introduce you to her.
Great, thank you. Welcome. We're glad to have you. All right, so with that, I'll open it up for public comment on matters pending before the commission, but not listed on the public hearing. And I have one on the sign up sheet, and that is Ms. Diane Brown Towns. And just, you probably know this, but you'll have three minutes. When the light goes yellow, you'll have one minute left. All right, thank you and welcome. Just state your name and location.
Okay, I'm Diane Brown Towns. I reside in Alamo County, Virginia.
Can you bring the microphone just a little closer to your face?
A little hard to hear you.
Move.
I am Diane Brown Towns and I reside in Alamo County, Virginia. I am Diane Brown Towns, and I reside in Almaral County, Virginia, Stradana District. I serve on the, served on the county's Historic Preservation Committee's Cultural Heritage and Educational Subcommittee from 2019 to 2022, at which time we contributed to Phase One of the county's AC44 Comprehensive Plan. Since my time of service on the Historic Preservation Committee, I have been conducting research studies on free and enslaved families' migratory patterns during antebellum and postbellum American history. I have been able to better understand more about how they contributed to the economic growth in Almaral County, of Almaral County since approximately 1764. I returned to Lane High School Auditorium today, my alma mater, to speak to you, with you, about the need for repository to highlight and preserve the history of free and enslaved people during antebellum and postbellum Almaral County and central Virginia. The UNESCO rated museum would serve to support biodiversity by joining together Historic Preservation and Environmental Conservation. I have a full plan outlined for the museum and prepared, quite prepared, to fully engage the Vipana Planning Commission's commissioners in the planning process in its entirety. Thank you for your time in allowing me to speak with you today, and I look forward to speaking with you again in the future.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak to matters not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any commissioners who would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
New discussion? We have the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Carazana.
Aye.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Clayburn.
Aye.
Mr. Moore, Mert.
Aye.
And Mr. Vivens. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, we are cruising. So with that, I'll move on to the first public hearing item, SP 2024-24 Spring Hill Farm Subdivision. And I'll turn it over to staff.
All right, thank you. I'm Rebecca Ragstale, a Planning Manager with the Planning Development Review Team. And I will go over this item for you this evening. It's the Spring Hill Farm subdivision request, and you have seen it before in March. So I will do a little bit more of abbreviated presentation than I did and highlight the changes since then and staff's updated recommendation. As a reminder, this property is west of Charlottesville and it's near the Ivy Interstate Interchange off Dick's Dick Woods Road. The property is over 340 acres and there are multiple access points. That includes Grassmere Road, Dick Woods Road. And then you can see here that there are sections of Spring Hill Village that were already developed. That includes Loblawy Lane and Spring Lane, which will be, one of which will be providing access to new lots. There is a great deal of history associated with this parcel, but the main thing to emphasize is that the original special use permit was approved in 1981, which was a different, different crop plan, different ordinance back then. But the restriction on the property that has carried forward today limits the development of the remainder of the the tract without special use permit approval. So primarily, we are focused on how it gets developed based on this unique provision of the ordinance. There was some special use permit activity in 2000 and 2002, but those expired. In 2022, there was a special use permit approval to allow the development of two lots, which are those lots that are off of Dick Woods Road. So that's where those are on that portion of the track. And the the boundaries of the parcel are such as they are because of open space along Dick Woods Road and Ivy Creek. So more specifically, in terms of the natural resources of the property, which we has been our primary focus with the review of the concept plan was to make sure that as much area as possible was left in the conservation areas or areas that would not be developed, such as the critical slopes. And then again, Little Ivy Creek is to the north along Grassmere and then Ivy Creek along Dick Woods Road. And it currently is primarily or entirely wooded. This is the previous concept plan, which when we had the public hearing in March, staff had concerns about the length of driveways, the number of driveways, and the location of building sites. We also had some discussion about how much acreage was in residential lots versus would be in under common ownership and conservation areas. So the applicant took those concerns into consideration and has reduced the length of driveways, shifted some lots around, reduced the acreage in residential tracks, and has responded to those concerns. Now, we, you can see this is not a site plan level plan, and we acknowledged in the staff report. We don't think that will impact critical slopes, but if they should, then that would have to go through a separate process. And then we will also formally review and act on the waiver to a single point of access. We know a single point of access doesn't make sense, given the size and the configuration of this parcel. But that was noted in the staff report. The applicant provided a summary. They have reduced the number of lots in residential, the total acreage from 263 point seventy-seven down to about 193, 194, we're rounding up. And then they have reduced the driveway lengths, which were our primary concerns, and that led to some shifting around of the lots and the building sites on the concept plan, which I'll be happy to go back to if we need to. We talked in in more detail about the the criteria. This is the criteria we show every time we review a special use permit, because this is our focus of that review. We don't believe there would be any substantial detriment to abutting lots. The folks that came to the community meeting were happy with the layout and, you know, general approach to it. There's only six residential lots that are proposed or tracks, if you will. And then, given the lot pattern and the character of the area, it will not, we didn't believe that would change. We didn't identify any public health, safety, or welfare issues. But we did point out that our primary goal in the rural area is not further residential development, but we believe they are with the with their revised concept plan and our refined conditions of approval that I can go into in more detail, that they have addressed the concerns and we're now recommending approval. Quickly, I know this is, these are very detailed conditions because it is residential development in the rural area. One through five were conditions that were previously included with those two lots that I mentioned that were approved in 2022. We added a condition that makes sure that we can get, we can review grading, we can review erosion and sediment control. It kind of, we wanted to make sure any circumstance, you know, we didn't, we wanted to make sure we would be able to review it regardless of whether there was, were any exemptions that they qualified for. And we also added a condition regarding driveway length. The ordinance covers the design of driveways, but when we reviewed it with the fire marshal, they wanted to make sure that we had the ability to make sure there was adequate adequate emergency vehicle turnaround at the end of the driveways. So with those conditions and the revised concept plan, we have recommended approval. I think we've already noted the features of the plan in terms of the consistency with the lot patterns and addressing conservation or critical resources and increasing conservation areas. So with that, I will pause and answer any questions you have.
Thank you. It was a great refresher. Any questions for staff?
I just have a a small clarification. On Condition Two, when we say only one dwelling unit is permitted on each new track, does that include or exclude accessory units? I just don't, I just don't remember.
I'm just, one dwelling unit, we have a definition of dwelling units.
That's why I'm asking. I just, I I looked and I just, I can't, I can't find it.
It it does not address accessory apartments. So within a single-family detached dwelling, you're permitted an accessory apartment, but it would be within within the footprint or within the, it must be within an existing single-family dwelling and it's restricted in size.
So I couldn't put a cottage, I couldn't, I couldn't do a design where I put it, put a cottage on the property?
Not as a not if it had all the features of a dwelling.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to find. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, so in your item about stream buffers, you say that the stream buffers may be may be protected consistent with the county's ordinance for stream buffers. So currently in our ordinance, we allow people to remove streams wholesale, after which we no longer enforce the stream buffers. I assume that would not be allowed. And I wonder if instead it, you know, it would make more sense to to say this, the the stream buffers as described on the site plan.
So there are some conditions that are in addition to our ordinance in terms of what's allowed in in riparian buffers and mitigation plantings and where agriculture would be, you know, additional regulations on agriculture. I'm not, so stream buffers, I think that would be Condition Three.
Condition Three.
I don't think these are streams that could be tight, but we can, before this is, goes to the board, we can make sure that that scenario is not possible. I had not believed that it was, but we, we think the conditions are adequate to cover that. But we can revisit it and make sure the wording is tight before the board acts on the special use permit.
Great. Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll open up the public hearing and ask for the applicant to speak, please.
Thank you. I'm Ethan Miller. This is my wife Diane. We're the owners of this property through our company, Blueskins Land Corporation. I'll skip most of the history. People have have heard before, just in general, nineteen, this property was acquired by my my grandmother, Nettie Marie Jones, in 1980. It was 600, originally 695 acres. She applied for, was granted special use permits in 1981, remarkably forty-plus years ago, to divide the property into 33 lots containing approximately 153 acres plus 10 acres of roads and residue parcel, approximately 531 acres. One of the most important features of the plan was that it preserved the original Spring Hill Farmhouse, which dated back to the 1830s, and also the the acreage around the farms. Essentially what it did, it kept the farm in the middle and and put the the residential building lots around the edges. And Mrs. Jones passed away in 1991, and my wife and I acquired the property two years later. So we held the residue of 500-plus acres for about almost 30 years. That's kind of remarkable. And in 2022, as Rebecca's pointed out, we subdivided off the southern 100 acres, which was topographically different or removed from the Spring Hill Farm, and entered on Dick Woods Road across from Bloomfield Road. And now in in 2024, we we submitted this, which you you folks saw on March 27. So we created a plan that had six new lots, approximately 264 acres with average lot size of 44 acres. And the total driveway length to serve the lots was approximately 8,400 linear feet, which included 2,200 feet of existing farm road. But in in response to the, we deferred the, in response to the concern by the staff, as Rebecca's pointed out, we've reduced the amount of acreage in the in the lots by 70 acres. So the average is now about 32 acres. And as as in the staff report, there is a requirement that the lots be at least 21 acres. So so we didn't have the the flexibility to make them smaller, smaller than 21. The other constraint that we had is that we're gonna allow the the residents to, since the property is mostly forested and the minimum amount of acreage for forest to qualify for land use taxation is 20 acres, that that way the the residents will be able to preserve the the forest if they choose to. In any case, so the, so we've also, we reduced the driveway lengths by 2,500 feet by using joint driveways. I recommend if you put the plan on on the 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 proposed plan. Okay, I can't see what mine is. Okay, so so what we've done is we've made a joint driveway for lots two and three from the top of Loblawy Lane, and then a joint driveway for what's now called lots four and six from Grassmere Road. Lots, lot number five will use the, there's been an existing farm road that's been there 50-plus years. So that's not new driveway construction. And the lot one will will access on on a right-of-way left on Spring Lane to your, to your, to the right there, in any case. The other difference is that we, unlike the last plan, we've included, as to the new driveway construction, which is the construction for everything except Lot Five, we've included the the restriction on residential clearing of the two-acre restriction to include the driveways. So the total amount of driveways is gonna be about one acre out of the total. In in some, what this is, I mean, you know, we we think that the original plan we submitted to you folks was a good plan. We also, we we think this is a good plan, too. The the, one of the most important things here is the resident support, as as Rebecca pointed out in the staff report. The residents of Spring Hill are, I think overwhelmingly supportive of this plan for a number of reasons. One is that it will preserve the, essentially the property the way it is now. We're gonna, of the 342 acres that that remains, we're only gonna use 12 acres for residential purposes. The rest will be forest or agricultural use, so. The other thing, of course, that it does is it it creates hiking trails and grants some ownership of the the parcels around the the streams, the Little Ivy Creek and Ivy Creek to the homeowners. In response to the question of of whether we would eliminate the streams, I I think that's gonna happen here, but, well, clearly it won't. So in any case, I don't think that's an issue. There's no intention to do that, nor would we. So in some, the plan results in residential clearing of only 12 acres of the 342-acre residue parcel, leaving 96.5% of the property in forestal use. In our view, the plan balances the the preservation of the rural character of the area, but allows some economic return from its ownership. And of course, we were happy to address the staff concerns and, of course, are willing to address any other concerns that the Planning Commission members may have tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Chair, could, Mr. Miller, could you please come, just for clarification, because I couldn't, I couldn't hear all of what you said. So when you said that there's two acres, the two acres that are being, gonna be preserved or be allowed for each lot?
Yes.
And you said one acre would be for the driveway, so that means the dwelling would be on another acre?
No, no, no.
Separate on.
Apologize, let me, let me put the plan back, back on. Okay, so what what we've done is is we've, I apologize, it wasn't clear. So as revised, the total amount of of the total length of the new driveway construction will be 3,600 feet, which is approximately one acre. And that will serve five of the lots, one, two, three, four.
I get it now. I thought it was per per lot.
Totally, essentially, average point two acres per lot. The only, the only distinction is Lot Five, which there's an existing road, so.
So it's not in, it's not in the calculation?
So in other words, that, but what I'm saying is that the that, to the extent that you restricted the use of lot of each of the lots to to two acres, then, for example, Lot Lot One, it will count the the length of the driveway, the amount of new construction on Lot One will be included in that two acres. For example, if it were point two, then only 1.8.
Okay, that 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 makes much more sense. I just think, why would you, I was, because what I was gonna say to you, why would you limit? Why would you use the the, use a driveway to take away from your buildable, your buildable space?
That's what this does, too. Again, it reduces, because it's joint driveways,
Correct.
reduces, you know, to a large extent, the amount of new 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 driveway construction.
Correct, okay, thank you.
Sorry for that confusion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
It's just, thank you. Was looking at the map, and thank you for the the revisions. I think it it sounds like some of the concerns I heard back in March, a lot of it seems to do some things with them. I was looking, wondering about Area One, Area One A, Conservation Area A, Conservation Area B, sort of fair amount of acreage there. That'll sort of stay in your ownership, or who who kind of maintains the trails and stuff along there?
The the trails will, well, the the areas which are I can't, I can't can't see up there. Okay, the the, there are three areas, one and one. Well, Area One is the area that goes along Dick Well, area one is the area that goes along Dickwoods Road and Ivy Creek. And that's going to be deeded to the, the Spring Hill Phase One lot owners. There are two phases. Phase one are the lots on Spring Lane, phase two are the lots that come off Lob Lolly Lane. So the, the, um, the homeowners for Spring Hill Phase One will own, uh, have title to the land along, um, which essentially borders their lots. The, the, the section which is to the south of, of those lots will either be owned by them or else the, uh, the two adjoining owners, probably the two adjoining owners, who, who took the lots that are on the south, lots one and two up Dickwoods Road, one of them presumably will, will own that, it won't be us. Um, in, in terms of the, 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 the area, which I think we call it tract two, I think, um, which goes along Little Ivy Creek, uh, that will be owned by the Phase Two Homeowners Association. Then there are these little conservation areas and initially they will, they will be owned by, by us. Uh, but I think that, uh, the question for me will be which presumably would, in, in the future will be one of these lot owners will assume ownership of those. So that's our long-term plan. Which of those lot owners would, you know, maybe they'll, maybe we'll create a, I don't want to decide exactly how to do it, but the, the plan here is that, um, that for the future only, you know, that, that the conservation areas will be owned by the lot owners.
Okay.
And we haven't exactly concluded exactly which ones are going to own it, but it won't be us.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. And we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak to this project? Bill, state your name and general location of residence. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm, uh, excuse me, I'm John Hedges. I'm, uh, one of the owners of the original Spring Hill Farm. House, uh, out of which, uh, the farm was developed, uh, for that Phase One and Phase Two lots forty years ago. Uh, the initial plan, I thought, was a good one, uh, by Mr. and Mrs. Miller. Uh, this plan before you today is also a good one. Uh, our, our property is arguably, uh, the most, uh, affected by any development. We fully support the, uh, applicant and, uh, what, uh, what they're doing. They put together a thoughtful plan, they consulted, uh, all of us, and they've been very responsive. Thank you.
Thank you.
We support the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this? All right, seeing none, is there anyone online?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, um, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Would anybody like to kick us off, sir?
Just a reminder that the applicant has five minutes to respond.
Thank you. I, I was hesitant to offer because I figured you'd probably, but you're welcome to respond if you'd like.
I'm glad that the residents support our plan.
Thank you. All right, well done. Thank you. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Would anybody like to kick us off?
So, I'll just bring up a concern I, I brought up last time. Um, so, the reason with a conservation easement, for example, that the, that the easement is held by another party is, is, is to ensure that that conservation actually happens. So, when, you know, there is actually a, a situation in Amherst County. I remember PEC talking to Amherst County and saying there was a, a piece of park property that there was a county easement on. And then Amherst County acquired the, the property. And one of the discussions was, well, really a third party should now own that easement, because now the county, the property owner and the easement owner are the same, which nullifies the easement, right? So i- in this situation, if we're going to say these conservation areas are truly conservation areas, um, for them to be, for them to be owned by the same, owned by, you know, the, the people that, sorry, I'm, I'm not speaking clearly. The, the ownership of the conservation areas is an issue because you don't have another party ensuring the conservation. So effectively, they're just other lots. There's nothing that makes them special or any different that, that, that really makes them conservation. Now, if they're, if they're owned by the HOA or they're owned by a third party, then that makes them, uh, you know, merits them as conservation.
I, I assumed that the, um, when they eventually work this out, that they'll have a deeded easement across the properties for, for the trail. I understand what you're saying, but I didn't, I didn't take it to mean that these open space deeded easements were going to be conservation easements.
No, I heard explicitly they weren't going to be conservation easements. Um, and that was, that was my concern. Now, if there was a deeded trail easement, there's, that was owned by the HOA, um, or by the community, that would make a lot more sense. But it, it seems like without that sort of work in place, you're not really creating open space here, you're just creating additional lots.
Well, they are, they are zones, if you will, set aside specifically for people to recreate on and enjoy the natural area. So they're not just someone's lot.
But, but who ensures that? Who's the, who's the party that ensures?
Well, I would imagine all of the people who have access to those lots have a vested interest in making sure that they can continue to access those. So if one owner decided to be naughty and put a fence up or something like that, that they would have their own recourse to require that they be reopened.
But they, they would have no legal recourse.
No, because it would be a deeded easement. They would, they will do some sort of legal agreement so that people can continue to traverse those trails, just like any deeded easement.
I mean, point taken, yeah.
No, no, Chair, I was only going to say, remember, we're not creating public space.
Right.
Right, we're, we're creating, we're creating private community space.
Yeah.
And so at that, uh, twelfth night party, the person who put the fence up is going to be really awkward when nobody talks to them. And in a community like that, I can imagine that they do awkward really well. So I'm not concerned.
Any other conversation, discussion?
To say that I'm, I'm pleased with the changes. I think that they worked hard to address it. And I think, um, staff probably worked hard to try to work with them. So I think this was a good outcome and I know that the applicant was a little frustrated by how long it takes and just takes in general in this county. But I think that we got to a better outcome. I think it's a better design. And it uses less, it's less impactful and it will allow enough landscape for birds and butterflies and bears and, and people to coexist. So I'm not going to sing kumbaya now or anything, but I, I am pleased with how far this has come.
Although I, I would just sort of share in this sort of fantasy world I live in, I just had hope with the creativeness that the Millers come forward with. It wouldn't have been nice to see these nice little, so, um, even expensive cottages there. So those of us who don't want land anymore could just go live in a very wonderful place and a nice, and a nice cottage on a piece of property like that. I would certainly sign up for that tomorrow.
You have an old post office on my property you could stay in.
That's too far. I, I want to, I'd be, want to be close to all of the amenities that are close to their property.
Mr. Firehawk, in lieu of kumbaya, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. My move to recommend approval of SB two oh two four four zero 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 two four for the reasons stated in the staff report, along with all of the recommended staff conditions.
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All right, may we have the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Vivins?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carizana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. And we will move on now. Thank you, guys.
And now you go to the board.
All right, we'll move on to SP twenty twenty-five dash one.
Just to say, uh, happy to talk to you afterwards about, I think we, that the issues that you raised, we can, our can, we can address the issue of the conservations, we can discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to SP twenty twenty-five dash one, Field School. And ask for the staff report.
Thank you. It's, uh, me again, Rebecca Ragstall, planning manager.
How you been?
Planning Division, long time no see.
Did you identify yourself?
This special use permit. Uh, so this is a very focused special use permit, uh, request, and it is an amendment to one condition associated with the already approved field school on Barracks Road. Uh, and the proposal is for a one-year extension, uh, to condition nine. Uh, and that is, uh, the, uh, there are nine conditions associated with the special use permit that we included in your packet, and those would all remain in place. And the only change is to, um, extend the deadline from August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five to August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, if they need that, um, in terms of what, uh, you know, we've heard referred to as an insurance policy. As a reminder, uh, the field school is approved for a site that is located, um, west of town on Barracks Road, uh, very close to the development area. And, uh, the city, it is located in the rural area and is designated rural areas in the comprehensive plan and is within, um, an area that has a, uh, a mix of, uh, agricultural open properties, but also a, a great deal of residential in terms of either rural lot or, um, development area residential, because it's so close to the development area. It's currently, um, open, uh, undeveloped with a pond and then wooded areas around the edges. Special use permit history again, because this one not quite as long as the other one. But, uh, this special use permit was originally approved, uh, as a private school. Uh, the school was approved in two thousand seventeen for a hundred and fifty students. And their original deadline for construction was February twenty twenty-two. Uh, they have been back to amend the special use permit condition, uh, a couple of times. The number of students has remained the same as far as maximum enrollment as a hundred and fifty students, as it will be, uh, as proposed with this most recent amendment. Or the one under review, the most recent amendment that was approved, uh, was approved in November of twenty twenty-one and extended, um, the deadline to August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Again, um, the enrollment would remain a hundred and fifty students. Since then, the applicant submitted a site plan, um, in April of twenty twenty-four. And, uh, that was approved in February of twenty twenty-five. They have submitted, uh, our site plan process is two-step, so they submitted their initial, which is approved, and they've been actively working to, uh, seek approval of their final, and their final site plan has been submitted as well. This particular special use permit, as we said, is limited to an amendment to condition nine only and to extend it, to extend it for one year only. Uh, we have not found any, um, change in character, change in circumstance, change in, um, traffic on Barracks Road, um, to be concerned about, uh, the one-year extension. And all of the, uh, conditions will remain in place in terms of development in accord with the concept plan. Um, the site plan, uh, initial site plan was approved and, um, included improvements to, or, excuse me, the special use permit was approved contemplating, uh, the need for turn lanes on Barracks Road. And the site plan has been, um, demonstrated consistency with that. So there hasn't been any change, uh, that's happened. And we can refer to these special use permit conditions if we need to, but those are all the same as, um, are currently in place, except for, uh, the change to number nine, as we mentioned, to extend it for one year. Uh, the conditions address not only enrollment, but buffers, hours of operation, lighting, and a number of other things that address public health, safety and welfare. So given that limited request, um, and no change since the last time the special use permit was reviewed, we have recommended approval and, uh, will be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? I just had one question. Could you remind us what, maybe it's in here, I apologize if I missed it, but what is the definition of the start of construction?
We did not include the deep, that detailed definition from the ordinance, and it is a multi-part definition, but essentially, um, it's tied to obtaining a building permit.
Okay.
And then starting those improvements.
Okay, I'm going to do, then I do have a question. Thank you for answering, asking that. So if you would help, uh, help me and then those who may be listening to us tonight. So we know, you've mentioned that they have the final, they've, they've submitted a final, final, um, site plan. I believe you have Mr. Rouse's name.
Yes, the final site plan and, um, water protection ordinance.
And that also, I said, so how far are we from a building permit?
It did, well, we haven't reviewed that plan yet.
Let, let me, so, so let's do that. Let's suppose, let's suppose by the end of June you have.
It's a matter of months. It's not a matter of years at this point.
So there's a problem, there's, there's, let me put it another way then. And I know we don't like to do this. Is it a possibility that they could pull, they could pull a permit by the end of August?
Um, I, I think that that is a likely possibility.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, so I'm just actually zeroing in, uh, there, so unless I heard you wrong, the end of August twenty twenty-six is what you're saying, right?
No, I'm saying.
Twenty-five?
Leaving it as it is.
Oh, leaving it as it is.
And I know, I know the applicant will come up here and will, will give us the explanation of life. But right now, I'm trying to figure out if, if the final is in.
Yeah.
Needs to be reviewed. And if there's enough time given, given, given staff's obligations, if they could meet the deadline, because the deadline just says you need to just begin, it doesn't have to be finished.
Right.
It just says has to begin.
Well, you know, we don't have that deadline in front of us. And I think that this, you know, amendment is requested not only, uh, you know, it allows them enough time so that it
Yeah.
become an issue and, um, you know, it doesn't, you know, it allows the review process to, you know, ample time for the review process. But I don't, I think it, you know, we're not certain, we can't guarantee that it would happen by August twenty twenty-five. So they requested the amendment.
Any other questions for staff? All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask for the applicant. Just as a reminder, if you could state your name and general location of residence, that would be great, and you'll have ten minutes to present.
On the screen, I don't know how to make it go up there. We're very technology light school. There you go, all right. All right, thank you. Um, my name's Beau Periello. I am approaching the end of my second year as the head of Field School. Uh, we are here this evening asking for a brief extension in our, uh, existing SP as we push as fast as we can to start the building process while ensuring that we meet any and all necessary regulations. We've had a very busy year, albeit with some setbacks, but remain committed to opening the campus for the twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year while doing things the right way as outlined by our SUP. For those who don't know us, Field is not a typical school. We're only boys, only middle school, grades five through eight, making us one of only three all-boys middle schools in the country. We have always focused just on boys' middle school and will continue to do so moving forward. We are small, only four grades and currently eighty-six boys. Natural outdoor spaces are part of the school ethos and very important to our student experience. Our goal is to maintain as much of the natural beauty and topography of the site as possible with long-term goals of both biking and hiking trails for the boys and community. We plan to build in phases, with the first initial phase to include one building with plans for up to ninety-five boys with limited potential growth. We remain committed to being good partners. Just last week, we were able to bring our design team to the Coldhurst Homeowners Association meeting and give an update and hear concerns. It was a very positive meeting and the neighbors seemed overall pleased with the project, the widening of the road, the left-hand turn lane improvements, while asking us to consider additional safety improvements. We agree that we want the safety, the safest possible travel for our families in the community. I want to say that we are working closely with VDOT and will follow any and all recommendations for traffic, safety and flow. We just received the data from a recently completed traffic study we had done and are happy to provide copies of the study and have already done so to VDOT and the Coldhurst homeowners. Finally, we just want to clarify that we are not asking for anything new in this SP, just a little more time. I do realize this project has had a long shelf life, but can only speak to my time in this position. And I can, can assure you that we have been moving with speed and purpose to get on. And I can, can assure you that we have been moving with speed and purpose to get on this campus. Over the last twelve to eighteen months, we have had, we have generated a lot of momentum and continue to move forward as quickly as possible. As an educator, we always preach lifelong learning and jumping into a building project like this has highlighted just how much I don't know, which is why we have a great group of professionals working with us. They include Daniel Hyer and Kendra Moon from Line and Grade, our civil engineers, Kevin Schaefer from Design Develop, our architects, along with Pete Morris from Faulkner Construction. We also have a great group of committed volunteers running our building committee, including Wick Knox, a current parent and principal at VMDO downtown, Jay McNeely from Eagle Court, Matt Wilkinson from Beck Cohen, along with our board chair, Will Sowers. This building committee meets every two weeks to make sure we are consistently moving the ball forward and have been doing so for over a year now. I also want to thank the county staff for their help in expediting the process for us. We currently have our final site plan and Virginia Stormwater Management Plan in for review with the initial building plan to follow in the coming weeks. We have a potential path to completion by our sunset clause, but also know things don't always work as planned or, and this extension request is to ensure that we can stay full steam ahead on the project. Ultimately, we are looking to start by building a one-building school to house up to ninety-five kids on this beautiful piece of land. We are currently in a building that is over one hundred years old that we rent from Almaral County and share with Croze Arts. Every time we get heavy rains, we lose a third of our classroom space, displacing faculty and students. Technology is spotty at best and large parts of the building are inaccessible due to asbestos. That combined with the fact that the overwhelming majority of our families come from town, make this move to Barracks Road crucial for our school community. We are desperate to give these boys a permanent space to learn and grow. There is no shortage of news out there highlighting that boys are falling behind educationally, so the need for a place like Field School has never been greater. And this move will allow us to have an even larger impact on the local area. Thank you for your time. I'd love to hear your questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions for the applicant?
I'm wondering if you could give us, if, it sounds like you're making a lot of progress and that's good. Congratulations on your tenure and the success you've had during that time. And I, it, it seems to me that you should be able to do this at least by September, if not by December, January first. And so I'm, I'm struggling with, I'm personally struggling with a year extension. I'm less, I'm struggling less with to the end of the year. I should just say that to you. Because I don't, I, I'm, it sounds like you're ready, you're really ready to go pull a permit. And so let's keep the pressure on you and your donors so that they get you to pull a permit. And so I just, I need you to, I, I need something more than I'm having, well, you've not shared tonight why you need more time. And so I guess that's really what I need to hear. I need to hear something about that.
Well, um, I mean,
and if you want to defer to one of your, I'm fine.
I'm happy to take a stab at it. Um, uh, although I will quickly defer to the professionals if, if, if they pull me off the, off the mic. Most of this has been through conversation with the county. We had a meeting, um, where originally we, we all put our heads together. They were trying to be very creative with us to help us get to toward the deadline. Uh, but we came out of that meeting, having batted a lot of things around with the, under the impression or feeling like the, we needed to at least ask for the extension to, to kind of protect ourselves or hedge ourselves. Since then, we've had an additional meeting. They've allowed us to go on an expedited review, which is helpful. That was not the case originally. Um, so now we will be meeting every couple of weeks with them, but having, I am a little new to this, but in my two years I have found that, um, timelines don't always hit. And so at some level, yes, I think we have a path, but this was really just to protect the project and make sure that we can get there. But we are, yes, we've got our permits in. I know, uh, our architects are very close to submitting the foundations and footing plan, which should be in, in the next week to two weeks, I believe. Um, so we are full steam ahead in that regard, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
All right. I actually, I have, I have a question, but this may actually be more to, for staff. So Route seventy, bike route two seventy-six goes right in front of this, doesn't it? And, you know, we don't very often get special use permits, um, or, you know, things along that bike route. And, and certainly I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to impose a condition at this point about that. But I don't know if that Route seventy-six will maintain that route, but right now it is used by cyclists. So just, have you considered, you know, for the, for the section of that road that passes, you know, across your, your property?
Is this on, on actual Barracks Road? Is there's bike path right there?
Yeah, it's crazy that they put some, a national bike route down that road, but that's where it is right now. Um, have you considered anything to make at least that segment of bike traffic a little bit safer?
I am, I, I know that we already have road widening, site, um, widenings. We're adding, uh, with the turn lane, additional widenings there. I also know that biking is an incredibly important part of our school and mountain biking is our biggest program. So we are certainly in tune with wanting to do right by the bicycling community, but I, I don't know the specifics about that particular bike lane.
All right. Great. Thank you. We appreciate it. Um, I will now look to the audience to see, I have two signups, um, to speak. First is Robert Humphries, Jr., and then John Hedges. You would please come up to the mic and state your name again. For the record, that would be great. And you'll have three minutes to speak and when the light goes yellow, you'll have one minute left.
Good evening. I'm Robert Humphreys, Jr. I live at one oh nine Falcon Drive, New Jack, New York District, and my property joins the school. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Robert Humphreys, Jr., and I live at one oh nine Falcon Drive. My family has lived there since nineteen seventy. I'm here tonight to respectfully but firmly urge you to deny the field school request for yet another extension on their mandatory construction start deadline for the property on Barracks Road. This project has had more than enough time and more than enough chances. Since purchasing the land in two thousand nineteen, the school cycles through at least three heads of school, at least two engineering firms, and has already missed two previous deadlines to begin construction. In other words, six years and there's been little to show except turnover and delay. When they last asked for more time, they blamed COVID and said they couldn't raise the funds, but they had no visible fundraising effort, not even a page on their website. Meanwhile, other local organizations like the Boys and Girls Club successfully raised millions and completed a fifty-two thousand square foot facility during the same period. The difference in follow-through and commitment, which the field school simply has not demonstrated. Now their latest site plan moves the entrance halfway up the eastbound hill on Barracks Road, no longer across from Magnolia Ridge, but in a more dangerous location. Because of that, VDOT is requiring a commercial entrance, which means both a right turn and a left turn lane, expanding Barracks Road to four lanes at that spot. That's exactly where the westbound traffic picks up speed after clearing city congestion. This new layout introduces a hazardous traffic situation, and it's not hard to predict a future request for a school zone and a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, which would significantly impact thousands of daily drivers. Enough is enough. This project has stalled for years. It's already had multiple opportunities to move forward and fail. Now it brings added safety concerns to a major traffic corridor. I ask you not to reward inaction with yet another extension. Please deny this request. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, John Hedges? Okay, we don't have John Hedges. All right. Uh, would anybody else like to speak to this issue this evening? Okay, seeing none. Anybody online? All right. Well, um, would the applicant like to come up? You'll have five minutes to respond to what we just heard if you'd like.
I certainly want to be respectful of Mr. Humphreys' comments and concerns while highlighting that we did just complete a recent traffic study to, um, that we're happy to share. If you all haven't seen a copy, I know the staff does. As well as, uh, just to reference the, you know, the amount of, of work that we have done in the last year, to, to show that we have not been kind of resting on, on trying to get an extension, that we are working as fast as we can on this, as evident by our, our, uh, site plan and our Virginia Stormwater Management Plan. And also just highlight what a, what a wonderful meeting we had with the Coldhurst folks, um, including a email exchange I've had with their, uh, with Sabina Martin, the head of their homeowners association, highlighting that they felt very positive about our presentation last week and, uh, that most of the neighbors seemed very positive about, uh, us being future neighbors. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Would you like to kick us off?
Chair, Chair, I'm, I'm supportive. I understand the condition that they've been in. I am, I'm struggling with a, a year. I would be, uh, I would like to offer for consideration that they, that this process be wrapped up since it's now an expedited review, if I heard correctly, be wrapped up by the end of this year, by sort of January first, that this be wrapped up. And then that gives everyone the opportunity to, um, expedited review is a big thing for staff to sort of put, to sort of go to. So I, I would, I would be, um, I would be amazed if this couldn't get to a permit being, permits being pulled by that time, given where we're, giving where the applicant has told us that they are right now. So I would, I would offer an amendment to the, to what was proposed by staff that it, that, um, that instead of being August, August twenty-six, that'd be January first, uh, twenty-six.
I'll just throw out.
Do we get staff to weigh in on that too?
Yeah.
More familiar with all the different.
And if I could just mention something too, just for some background, I guess. I was thinking the same thing. So having, um, been through this many times as a, as an applicant, I think the intent is really what I'm looking for and the intent seems to be clear that the goal is to get this done sooner than later. I think the reality is not clear. The reality of what we've seen in applications is that not just in this county, but in other locations, is that it takes much longer than you expect. And so the other issue that's kind of a wild card from an applicant standpoint is the budget. So as we know now, right, I mean, it seems like the faster you go, the better you're going to be able to lock down numbers quickly, but you also might run into the situation where something comes out of left field and you can't afford it. And so you have to value engineer it or value manage it, and that takes time to try to get it in.
So as someone who's been in this, in that world,
Yeah.
of value engineering should take place after you've posted your permits.
After, I'm sorry, you posted your permit.
Right. So, so that's a piece of the process that I completely understand, having been somewhat involved in those kinds of entities. I think that as, 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 as the, as, as the condition is mentioned, it's just they need to start building. And, and if we understand start building means you just got to pull a permit.
Well, the other reality is, um, bill, building permits are taking a lot longer than they used to now. And we're actually using third-party reviewers to supplement. No, we're paying for third-party reviewers to supplement. They basically review our documents, they stamp them, and then they come to the county and the county turns them around. Because there's challenges with the timeline in terms of getting permits approved. So it's just a reality. It used to take a month. And this is not, you know, I'm not.
You're not speaking out of school.
No, I mean, it's just the reality. It takes months to get some.
That would still then, and still deferring to letting, letting staff, that's still, that still seems reasonable by the end of the year, this should be able to happen. But I'll, I will listen. I will listen to, yeah.
Well, you know, in terms of the overall process and all of the other people that are involved, you know, we've, you know, expedited doesn't mean we can guarantee a certain timeframe. Uh, we have VDOT and the Health Department that need to review this. They can take, um, you know, we can ask, but they can take the full extent that they can. And this isn't just the site plan, there is the building permit process. So I just don't see a reason, you know, from our perspective, a one year is, um, is reasonable and there's nothing, you know, that would change in a year that gives staff concern in terms of extending the special use permit one, one more year. I wouldn't want to extend it for too little time and then we're back in the same position due to unforeseen circumstances. Uh, and, uh, so we were comfortable with the one year.
Any other discussion? Sorry.
Oh, no, I'll just say, uh, I'm definitely comfortable with the request. I was just looking at this slide that we have before us here. There is no reason that I see the applicant wanting to drag their feet when you look at the four bullets that are before us today. So I'm glad to support, uh, as presented.
I'll just note, I feel much more comfortable having heard from the applicant because I was concerned
Yeah.
when I saw the applications, like another year and then another year, and maybe they really don't have the money for this and, you know. So I, I, it sounds like more that it's just being, creating a safety net in case VDOT takes a long time or Health Department takes a long time, uh, rather than them not really being able to pull it off. So I, I, I'm, I'm less worried having heard from them.
Yeah, I have to agree that I was too, because I didn't, I mean, there was nothing in the document that told me, wow. And, and I have to say, I have to be honest and say, if it's about them not having the money, that's not enough to say yes for me. Because that's not what we do.
Right. Right.
That's what you do. That's not what we do. We do. You came to us two years ago. We said, we'll give you to this date. And so hearing from the applicant that they're moving, they're trying to move ahead and that in two weeks you're going to have all the various properties. I mean, I would hope that this is done by this year. I, 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 I struggle and this is, this is, this is a, a big parenthesis right now. So one of the things that we hear in the community is it takes too long to get things done. So we need to figure out the big corporate we, how we can mitigate that language. Because we, the corporate we, should not be the people who say, we're going to give you more time. That should be the applicant who is failing to be able to, to, to meet the deadlines. The deadline should not become an anchor or a drag because we are not staffed well enough. And so I'm saying that for the people who will hear this after we're finished, that it's not, it just should not be a staff liability in getting this done. Chair, I move. So I, I move that we accept the recommendations as presented in the staff report and, and that we, we, we extend until August twenty, uh, August twenty-six with the, with the hope, with the sincere hope that this is finished shortly, be short, be significant for.
So you're recommending approval of the SP as presented by staff this evening for the reasons presented by staff this evening?
Yes, with the sincere hope. The sincere hope.
Some sincere hope in there.
There's a sincere hope, sub clause, council.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All right. Maybe we have the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Bivins?
Here, uh, uh, we, uh, yes, yeah, we, we.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Quayburn?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehop?
We.
Oh, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your coming. Thank you. All right. We will move on to item number seven, committee reports. Do any commissioners have any reports they'd like to share?
That guy.
Yes, yes. There's a CAC met, um, and, and we had a nice little, we had a nice little, um, workshop actually about the, um, I'm going to get the name wrong, the, the, there's a little toolkit for the, um, sustainability, um, action plan. Those things, though. But anyways, you, you come up with an idea about sustainability. There's like a little grid and, you know, you break into groups. And it was interesting to hear that everyone's ideas about different ways that, um, that we can make our community more resilient. That's what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Any others?
Yes, sir.
Two.
All right.
One is the, uh, C-TAC MPO, the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee of the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Charlottesville and Almaral, which is the committee name. Um, there's a lot of interest in the C-TAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, to, um, actually provide feedback that's meaningful and solutions oriented. Uh, I think there's been a feeling the last year, year and a half that we just kind of hear staff reports and say, oh, this seems nice, um, or not. And so, yeah, look at the bylaws, um, you know, sort of what's the real purpose and function and looking to be a source of deeper engagement, which was really a, a robust inching discussion to be a part of. Also quite a cool thing, uh, under the Safe Streets and Roads for All Initiative that's going on, applying for a four and a half million dollar grant from the US Department of Transportation that has not had the chainsaw guy come after it.
Wow.
And, uh, it's essentially the chainsaw. But, uh, I learned a new jargon term, VRUs, which is a vulnerable road use. Um, but I learned a new jargon term, VRUs, which is a vulnerable road user. Uh, so pedestrians, bicyclists, people on scooters, whatever. Uh, and so it would be a a really uh, cool combination of UVA engineering, applied biomechanics, UVA health. And several other big key stakeholders coming together to study kind of like. How to make the roads safer for all these VRUs and in turn inform uh, like for our overall plan. Um, so that was neat to hear about. Um. The Rio twenty nine places, uh, places twenty nine CAC also met. The big conversation was really around. Uh, Lakeland Commons, which is colloquially known as the Rio Eco Village.
Rio who?
The Eco Village on Rio Road.
Oh, I get that bees, Bee Honey again.
Well, so the uh, some of the principles behind the original Eco Village concept are no longer with us. And so um, uh, there's a new buyer. It's a guy out in Croze who's looking to develop it. Uh, they came and presented about sort of a new plan for um, uh, seventy five, I want to say, uh, units. Uh, on that that sort of, how many acres that is, six and a half acres. The old old school Rio Road, the kind of like where that that big curve after you cross Meadow Creek and the kind of big curve going uphill. It's in the curve.
There. That's Park Street there. That's Park Street.
Across from that rather difficult intersection with Agnes.
You know, there's that, there's that period home that sits below well below gray. There was a mill there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's 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 right above from.
Yeah, yeah, just up the hill from there. Uh, first lot in the county, actually. Yeah. Um, and so um, that would be an interesting, so basically it's a, uh, what they're proposing is kind of a townhouse form. Uh, where you kind of enter on the southern side of the lot, uh, kind of come back around. It also kind of curves up the hill with sort of townhouses and and sort of park and native plants. They're very, very big on uh, native plant details and solar farm on rooftops details. A a little lighter on things like road connections. Um, but uh, that may come to us at some point. Um, there's a few things they still need to work out with VDOT, for example.
How far away do you think they are from coming to us? Is it like six months, nine months?
It is not scheduled and I'm not sure. Um, the the I know the the northern exit that would uh, uh, drop off near Stonehenge. That's kind of new developments there on Rio. Um, that intersection VDOT definitely did come back and say like that that ain't gonna work. And so that I don't know. Um, they also got some feedback from some of the neighbors, of course, that had, you know, things to say. Um, they do though have among the developer team is a very, very talented um, sort of landscape architect. Uh, who seemed to really know the stuff with with water.
Do you remember who that was?
I don't.
Just a quick question on the VRUs. Who presented that?
Uh.
Not not necessarily a name, but who were they with? Was that?
It was a guy with um. I want to say from Applied Mechanics. Now I have to go back.
It's okay. I just, I can look it up. It's okay, Nathan. No worries.
I think one interesting thing about that grant is that um, I think it's. One point six million dollars with twenty percent local match. And of that twenty percent, half of it's coming from UVA and the other half is coming from Honda. It's coming from Honda, the the car dealership. That's a sort of a look at trying to deal with. Vulnerable users um. In our community, you know, I think there was like eighty some people between the last five years that they've. Classified as vulnerable users who've been in, you know, in accidents. So it's an interesting potential study and interesting opportunity to have uh. University and and a private entity help fund something in our community. Chair, if I could.
Yes.
I was just asked, as we're talking about transportation and and monies that have not been pulled yet. There was a, there was a public, uh, a public setting. I don't know. It's not necessarily a hearing, Mr. Barnes, but there was a public gathering with VDOT. Last week, last Wednesday or Thursday, I can't remember where they laid out the various projects that are that are either on their or that are definitely. Funded. And that will be completed within some X amount of time. And I will say that. As they come forward from things like the 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 um, roundabout at District Avenue, which is if you know where Stonefield is, it's the that that roundabout right there. Um, another roundabout set up down twenty, the reconfiguration of Fontaine Avenue. There's a whole host of projects. That I don't think we, the community knows about, but that are still funded and that will move forward. And that's just. I will just share, I was so pleased to see that that level of work that that will make a significant difference in the way people move around. That didn't have the dollars. So thank you very much for taking these and putting them back in our pocket.
Any other committee reports?
So I didn't want to mention one other thing. Um, so before this meeting, um, I was able to get a tour of Almarle County's green roof. And one of the interesting thing is is um. Years ago, um, I did a native plant um, trial project on on the green roof. We working with county staff, we we chose a bunch of. Um, plants that were native to Almarle County that were chosen because they live in very ziric um, extreme environments. And then we put them up on trays and on the county green roof and and just. Went to see how they did. And very interestingly, a bunch of them are still live up there. So um, so we have now pretty good data about which ones work the best and which ones um. Which ones don't. And so um, that's data that if anyone else is planning a green roof. Nathan, if I think you said someone was talking about green, we have, we now have data about what what native plants in Almarle County work well on green roofs. So.
Is it going to be published on the county's website where they talk about the green roof? Do you know?
Um, I don't know that, um, but that's a great, that's a great idea. That is a really great idea. Um, but I'm definitely going to compile the photographs I took today, um. You know, and and give those back to staff and and hopefully we can do something like like you suggest.
Uh, to answer your question earlier, Commissioner Missile, I think it was Rob Timman.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, move on to item number eight, review Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Barnes?
And probably I think Rob Timmerin is a uh, local, he's a, he's a.
He's at the university, yeah, and but a transportation researcher.
Transportation researcher with the council there. Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, as far as board supervisors meetings, we've had two since we last met. One was a special session with the town of Scottsville. Um, where they were going over the standard in Scottsville and dealt with uh, sort of. Five different aspects that were um, pertinent to the town, including AC forty four. Um, sort of the new economic development strategies plan that's being released right now. The infrastructure updates from the service authorities, both for Havana and Almarle, and then finally. Discussion of some of the fire and rescue operations there in the town. The board also held a meeting on May twenty first. Uh, there were three presentations in the afternoon. The first was a cost of community services study, um, sort of discussing sort of different types of land uses in the rural areas and. The relative tax rate um, to cost of services that those types of land uses would. Uh, typically generate or cost, depending on how you look at it. Uh, there was also a presentation of the Economic Development Strategies Plan that's being worked up right now. And a discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, finally, they held um, two public hearings. The first was on the county secondary secondary six year plan. Uh, AKA the rural rustic um, paving program. And the last one was item came in front of you all, which was uh, the four hundred Rio uh, Road West. That was the old telecommunications building that's being switched over for Ferguson's um. Plumbing supply.
Hmm, yeah.
Thank you. So they say yes, sir. Excuse me, sir? Did they, did they? Yeah, and they approved both of those.
Yeah, the the meeting with the town of Scottsville was interesting. If you have a chance to listen to, they were, one of the questions I thought was interesting was. How does the board see the town of Scottsville? How, what is their relationship? What is the board? How do they view them? How do they work with them? And one of the areas that came up was tourism. I thought was interesting, uh, but there's a couple of other comments that were interesting.
Chair, are there enough people, is there enough population in the town of Scottsville for it to remain a town?
I don't know. I don't know what to cut off.
If they applied today, it would be well under the threshold.
Would.
If they applied today.
And is there, so is it one of those things, once I have the status, I have the status, so there's no review of the status?
They they will not lose their town status based on population.
On the other side, Croze has a population qualified as a city.
Yeah. They want me to sign the, is there a pop, are you saying that because there's a, there's a, there's a petition?
No, just out of, just out of curiosity, but um, I did have a question. Um. The you you mentioned the rural rustic roads. I know there is some some very interesting staff proposals about changes to the policy for rustic roads. I was waiting for the recording to come out. But could you, could you tell me? I know one of the recommendations was for the um, the do not pave list that for to put roads on there for six years. And did that, did that go through?
That did go through and um. It was approved, yes.
Thanks.
Great. Um, thank you, Mr. Barnes. Any new business or old business or items for follow up? Everybody? All right, well, with that, um, I will adjourn the planning commission to the next meeting, which will be on Tuesday, June tenth. At six PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.